Okay, we're ready to start. We acknowledged that the land upon which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation called Order. And I just want to express my sympathy about the residents in Maui, specifically Mahone, where it's reported 96 have been found, 96 deaths, and it's mounting. So from one municipality to another, whether it's cross borders, cross the ocean, our sympathies go to the residents. Declarations of conflict of interest? Any declarations of conflict of interest? Okay, seeing none. Prove up the agenda. Moved by Counsel McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Ramsey. All those in favor? Okay. Now, we have three sets of minutes. Regular meeting, July 10th, 2023. Public planning meeting, July 11th, 2023, and special meeting, July 24th, 2023. Need someone to move the adoption? Moved by Counsel McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Beck. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Business arising, aired at the minutes. Seeing no business. Okay. So first report is Deputy Mayor Laniyankov, Planning, Heritage and Development.
Thank you, worship. The Planning and Heritage Committee did not meet in August, therefore there are no minutes or a report to attach. The Planning Board met on August the 8th, and the reports and minutes are in your package. Also included in there is the public meeting from July 11th, and also the minutes from August 8th. The Heritage Board met on July 31st. Copies of the board reports are also attached in your package. Design Review did not meet in July, and the Affordable Housing Committee also did not meet this past month. I have seven resolutions for your consideration this evening, and if anyone has any questions, I will do my best to answer. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions on the report from Planning and Heritage? Okay, so we'll go to the first Eleanor, CAO Eleanor. Okay, good, good. Okay. Counsel Twill, and then Counselor Duran.
Thank you for your report, Counselor, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Yankov. Friday, I sent an email into senior administration, particularly the Planning Department, regarding the new developments at the Outreach Center. Residents have been calling, emailing me, wondering what is taking place with the future of this facility. And new developments, new amenities continue to be constructed on this site. First question, please, if you can answer, or maybe staff can answer, is did they receive a permit for the gazebo and other amenities that are being constructed there? That would be my first question.
Deputy Mayor?
Okay, thank, great. Thank you, Counsel Twill, for your question. The Planning Committee, or Planning Board, or Heritage Board, or Design Review Board have not given any permits of any sort ever to the Outreach Center. So any new developments that's happening now is obviously happening without a permit. So therefore, the proper process would be that a stop work order would have to take place, they would have to get a permit, and from there, if there's additional things that should take place, whether the things that have been built should be taken down until they actually have a proper permit, I would think that that's the proper way to do things as a city. But I will ask CAO Eleanor, what is the update on what the direction staff will be taking to deal with this?
Yeah, just to clarify, the permits don't come from the Planning Board, the Planning Committee, it comes from the Department of Planning, Development, and Heritage. CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, worship. So it has been confirmed that a permit hasn't been received for the gazebo. The other work that was going on, from what I understand, they were putting in some underground piping, which was a six-by-six-foot hole that was at the front. That was utilities that was working in there, so that was us, that was the city. And the province has been notified that they need to submit a permit to the city for the gazebo. And Deputy Mayor is correct, the next steps that would be taken is a stop work order issued for the gazebo.
Second question, Counsel Twill?
Yeah, well, I do recall, I do recall that businessmen put up a structure similar down Victoria Row, and council of the day made them take it down. So I think we have to exert a bit of consistency here, continuity, predictability. It's no secret that the developments, or the lack thereof, developments that are happening on that site with regards to distribution of drug paraphernalia, drug usage, there has to be an opportunity for senior staff to go through the zoning and development bylaw, the official plan. That is not harmonious with this community. In between two city schools, next door to a senior citizen complex, adjacent to apartment buildings, tenants that deserve to have peace and tranquility, and a quality life, as well as the residents on all of our street. It's just been pure torture for the last two years, and I would urge you, please, take this back to your Planning Department, have them go through the zoning and development bylaw and the official plan with a fine-tooth comb.
Okay.
It's not working, it's gotten worse, and residents are extremely frustrated. School is opening in just two or three weeks' time. They want the facility shut down. Plain and simple. Shut it down. Enough is enough. So I thank you for taking the recommendations of the residents under consideration. Thank you.
So Deputy, that will go through operations, correct? Do you want to address that?
Thank you, Counsel Twill. I will have that vetted through the operations, and it, you know, when it comes to applications that Planning Board and Planning Committee, Design Review and Heritage Boards see, you know, we look at planning principles, and we look at the effects to the community, and unfortunately, in this situation, this was not, this was not anything that council ever had an opportunity to have a discussion around because the required zoning had already been in place for this building, so therefore, there was no permission granted or required from the council at the time. But I really appreciate your concern, and definitely this will go back to another meeting, for sure. Thank you.
Counsel Duran?
Thank you, Deputy, for your, for your report. I echo the comments of Counsel Twill. This, this has, this, this center has been a nightmare. I, I deal with it firsthand. We have an apartment through my wife, it's been in the family for 30, 40 years. In the last month, people have broken into the basement, to the shed, then they broke into the apartment, stole wallets. We deal with the tenants, the fear, you know, we have security doors. I've found needles on the stairs, I've chased people out of the yard, you know, and I go back to, you know, the mayor's, an email to some of the residents that, that live in fear, you know, even in Park Street, they approached me, I have young kids, Bob, you have to do something, you know, Upper Hillsborough Street, all the surrounding areas, I drive by there nearly every day, I see it, you know, I think we have a camera up on a pole there, where there's, if there's 3,500 police calls a year, why isn't this stopped? And the question, with all that background information I'm getting at, is for zoning. We sit here and we say, well, it's zoned for that. But I mean, if we give zoning to a sports bar, and they open up, and okay, you're allowed to have that here, but we give 3,500 police calls to that sports bar, and there's stabbings, there's, there's people fighting continuously, the residents are fearful around the sports bar, would we not do something about that? Could we not do something? You know, it's just getting to a point. When you look at a person that has young children, and they're terrified, you know, that's what gets me. I, I don't live down there, you know, but it scares me that, that there's somebody waking up, especially the emails that we got last week, or the week before, where there was a person with a broken leg in the gazebo, that's scary stuff, you know, and us as a council, I know we sit here, like, and we say, well, it's the province predicament because they're in charge of it, but there's somewhere, we have to stop this. And I understand people that need help, you know, I dealt personally with addictions my whole life, my, my family, I know what it's like, but some of these people, and I can't classify them, they don't want help, they're using this as a, as a crutch. And I've had former addicts, you know, come to my house, call me, saying, Bob, you're not helping these people by this, you know, they need help, which I fully understand, but this situation, it's not helping those people. There could be a few get help, I realize that, but for the surrounding areas, for these residents with young children to wake up on a daily basis, with someone breaking into the apartment, with needles all around, there's got to be something done. And I, I don't know if I'm asking the deputy for zoning, you know, if you can answer that, if it's a police issue, but us as 10 elected, or 11 elected officials, we're going to have to come to the table fairly quickly. And I, and I know what new business, you know, the deputy and a couple of counselors are looking forward till next month, but these people need help now. You know, they're terrified, they're looking to get out of their areas, they're looking to sell their homes at a loss of hundreds of thousands of dollars, and what can we do to help them? You know, I don't, I don't know the answer. When I tell them that it's a zoning issue, that they're allowed, I don't know if it's Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, that we have to go to the province, but we're going to have to come to the table fairly quickly. So I don't know who can answer that.
Counsel Duran, I'm just going to interject here. Last week, last Thursday, I believe, the deputy and I and our CAO met with the Ministers of Health and Wellness, and Housing, and their deputies, and assistant deputies, and there were minutes that were gathered from that meeting, we're waiting for them to look over those meetings, those minutes. Those minutes will be distributed to council, and that will be part of the, under the new business notification of resolution. We don't have to wait till September 11th. We can, we can do it the last Monday of this, or the fourth Monday of this month, if we want to deal with it right away, which I think you're suggesting. So, carry on there.
There we go, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Duran. So in terms of, you know, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're wondering about zoning, and, you know, and I go back to, I totally feel your frustration, I think we're all feeling it, the city's feeling it, the residents are feeling it, those that are using the facility are feeling it, and, you know, we do need a solution. A lot of the things you brought up are definitely police services, that I think that probably when Counsel Ramsey has his report, these same questions should be asked there when you talk about break-ins, and apartments being broken into, and sheds, and, and all of those things that you had just mentioned. And, and you, yes, you are correct, I do have a notice of motion that I am bringing forward this evening, and, and as the mayor said, we don't have to wait until September the 11th to talk about it. But, you know, for me, I go through the official plan, I go through the zoning and development bylaw, and I'm looking for ways to bring things forward, and this is the first thing I found. So hopefully, as a council, we can work together, and then, as a council, we can give direction to staff on what we want, and what is priority for us, whether it's law and order, whether it's safe communities, or whatever that might look like. But I, right now, I don't see it as a planning issue right now, I see it as a city of Charlottetown issue that we need to figure out ways with our staff, with our police services, to address and address quickly.
Can, can, can I just get Matard, and then you'll, I'll write back. Counsel Matard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to strengthen the sentiments here by the counselors, Duran, Twill, and Deputy Mayor Yankov. You know, being in Ward 2, I've received in the last probably three or four weeks, an increased number of emails and phone calls with, from concerned residents regarding a number of unwanted activities throughout the region of Park Street Shelter, but also the Outreach Center. You know, there are activities, there's, you know, destruction of property, there's break, there's theft, there's threats to people's person and property, we've all seen that, we've been provided with information on that, and we've also see an increased use of, you know, illegal drugs within our streets, our parks, and our pathways in this general surrounding area. And I think it's incumbent upon city council and the city administration to act upon this, to come up with solutions, to work with our policing and emergency services, and come up with an action plan as quickly as possible. People are fearful, people are demanding the city provide action, and show that we care about their safety and their well-being, and I'm here today to strengthen that message to all of council and the city administration, and will certainly support any motion, notice motion going forward to do that, and come up with solutions that work for everybody. Thank you.
Deputy?
Not doing a great job tonight. Thank you, Counsel Matard, and, and just to echo Counsel Twill, Counselor Duran's comments as well, and thank you for supporting the motion that will come forward later on this evening. And yes, we, we have to work together, and I appreciate the comments, and I'm sure there'll be more questions come up during Counsel Ramsey's report under Protective Services, and if there's any other questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Okay, Counsel Duran, and that, Counsel Twill, you already asked twice, so we just want to keep moving. Counsel Duran, this is your second time, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I understand that. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and the mayor gave a suggestion about moving it up to the end of the month. I'm just asking if we could do that collectively as a council to move it, because these people are scared and frustrated, so, you know, your new business, instead of going to September, that's, that's another six weeks or so, let's just move it up to the end of the special meeting. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Notification, correct me if I'm wrong, David, or Eleanor, notification is that for the next meeting of council? So next meeting of council is the 24th, I think?
It's the special meeting.
It's the last, second, fourth Monday in August.
Your worship.
It's the 28th?
24th.
24th. Okay, 28th, yes?
It should be a note that if you bring that motion to the special meeting this month, that the topics of the applications for the Park Street temporary shelter, along with the supervised consumption site, cannot be discussed, because that will prejudice the applications that are currently in the planning hopper that will be coming before council as well. So if you have it at the earlier meeting, you can speak about what the motion is, coming up with a community safety plan concerning illicit drug use, but it cannot be in relation to those two applications. So Outreach Center would be on the table, but not the other applications, simply because they're in a process of their own that they have to go through. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, let's just clarify it. So we can't have it on the 28th? Is that what you're saying?
Thank you, worship. So for clarity, it can happen on the 28th, but it cannot be about the Park Street applications.
No, I think this is about community police, correct? Yeah, could you just clarify that, Deputy?
Well, it's, my, my motion was quite clear of what it was, but to say that other conversations won't happen would be, would be very difficult, considering it, everything is, is really wrapped up together around the illicit drug use, and the, the insecurities and the unsafeness that the, everybody in the community is feeling. And that's not just the residents, it's those folks that are frequenting these places, it's people that are suffering with mental health and addictions, but, you know, our residents need some answers, and they're not getting them, so, I mean, the sooner we can have these discussions. And as a council, I guess if we're all willing to know that we can't discuss applications that we haven't seen yet, because none of us counselors have, have seen any of these applications, we just know that they are in the hopper with the planning staff, so as long as we are not talking about those, I guess we can proceed with an earlier meeting of council. Thank you.
Okay, Planning Board, number one, Counsel Twill. Okay, do you want to read the CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, worship. Heritage Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankov, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to designate 267 Fitzfroy Street, PID 346874, as a designated heritage resource be approved.
Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, 10-0. Want to go over the next one?
Okay, Planning Board Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankov, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request for a major variance to reduce the required side yard setback from 1.83 meters, 6 feet, to approximately 1.53 meters, 5.02 feet, in order to allow a change of use of the existing accessory building from garage to garden suite at 139 Beach Grove Road, PID 386623, be approved.
Okay, Counsel Beck?
Yeah, I have to declare conflict on this.
Oh.
Yep, I assumed, do I, or it's my nephew's?
You better step out.
My nephew's property.
Better move on.
So I'll just excuse myself.
Yes, go ahead. Counsel Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm, I'm just wondering about this resolution. We're looking at, I think, what is it, eight inches? And, you know, is there not something in the bylaw that can give our professional planners the ability to approve something like up to, say, five feet? I mean, this seems pretty miniscule, like...
It's a minor variance.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, the planners, they work in this business, we're not planners, you know, really, I mean, it's, it's very, you know, it's a waste of time, really. The planner looks at it and says, listen, it's a minor variance, we should be able to grant that. Can we not give the ability to the planners to do that? Why, why does it have to come back here?
Okay, Counsel Yank, Deputy Mayor Yankov?
I guess I should have directed it to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for your question, and a very valid question, but until the zoning and development bylaws changed, and the updates to the official plan are changed, then that's what we have. But if you don't want to wait until we look at the official plan and zoning and development, I can certainly take this back to our next Planning Board meeting, or actually, your Planning Staff, Planning Committee meeting, and we can get a report done, and bring it back, and have a look at changing that bylaw sooner as opposed to later.
Your request?
Yes, yes, thank...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, that, that would be my request, just to, to take it back and, and get it here, rather than waiting. I mean, it's, it's very small, within five feet or something, whatever they, they deem necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else we should notice about this CAO Eleanor? Is the use being changed from a garage to a garden suite? Does that affect, affect the variance?
Thank you, worship. I, I don't know off the top, the top of my head if that's the case of what the variance is being issued for, but I can say that planning staff are only bringing forward reports that they're required to under the zoning bylaw, so whether it's five inches or five feet, they still have to come here until that zoning bylaw is changed.
And the deputy said they're going to be waiting for a, a request from Counsel Duran to look at that. Okay, Counsel McCabe?
Thank you. I think we could probably go back and maybe look to Deputy Mayor around the size of the yard, where we had already previously discussed this before, where we went from a half an acre to 0.33 acre, because I think that's where the change of use might come into, because these garages or these secondary garden suites, if they had a roof line attached there as a right, but the minute we change our lot size and stuff, so if we could look at that again prior to, I'd appreciate that. And from a half acre to 0.33, I think we discussed before.
0.34, yeah.
Or 0.34, so it kind of all ties in, and I think that's where the change of use has to come into effect.
Okay. Deputy?
Thank you, thank you, worship, and so if I'm hearing everyone correctly, we are going to look at these minor and major variances when they're so small, as well as our lot sizes, so that we can, people can start making these accessory suites, garden suites, from the garages. So, so do I still need them to give an official request through email, or is this good enough on the council floor?
Good enough right here from the council floor?
Okay, you heard it.
The chamber, you got it right from the chamber.
And if anybody has any other requests in terms of what we have in our zoning and development bylaw, send it along.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I, question? Question called? All those in favor? Okay, 9-0, and can we just call in, call Counsel Beck back?
Always there.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Planning Board Resolution Number Two, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankov, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the development concept plan submitted in support of requests to amend Appendix B Comprehensive Development Area Parcels and permitted uses of the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw to permit a two-phase residential development including Phase One, 16 stacked townhouse dwellings, 32 units, and three apartment dwellings, 42 units, on 5.25 acres of land; and Phase Two, three apartment dwellings, 175 units, and two stacked townhouses, four units, on 2.7 acres of land; amend the easterly portion of the subject property in Appendix A, the City of Charlottetown Future Land Use Map from low-density residential to comprehensive planning area; and amend the easterly portion of the subject property in Appendix G, zoning map of the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw, from low-density residential single, R2S, zone to comprehensive development area, for the properties located at 247-251 Mount Edward Road, PIDs 390625 and 390633, be approved. PID 390625 and 390633, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Council Dron and Counsel Twill.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I look at this, and I know it's just to go to public consultation, but in the last number of months, and I think there's more to come, we're looking at probably 1,000 new units in a half mile. And, you know, I know we're in a housing crisis and we need housing, and I understand that. But the residents in my ward are so scared that the traffic is going to affect their homes, especially in Ash Drive and, you know, various side streets. I know your email to a person there, your worship, that it was, there was going to be a comprehensive traffic study on Mount Edward Road. I think you...
That was already done. That's the West Royalty Master Plan.
But recently, I don't know, I should have brought it. There was an email that, you know, there's something going to be done to Mount Edward Road. So all this traffic, all these new 1,000 units can't empty out into Mount Edward Road and go up Ash or, you know, different streets up that area. And I'm just wondering, is there anything in place? I know our manager of Public Works, there was a question that a street has to be developed within the new development, and then it'll be closed off. Is there any type of information that we can give the residents? That, you know, I don't know if they're going to be able to turn right into Ash and these streets. Is there anything, anywhere?
Back to the deputy, yes, go ahead.
Sure.
And the chief engineer is here, too. So everybody, not hurt, it's downstairs.
You know, because I know we need development, and that land's been sitting forever. So I understand that. The residents are so concerned with the information that they have right now. Thank you.
Deputy?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Council Dron, for your question. There was quite a bit of discussion at our planning board meeting around those similar questions. I would encourage any of the residents to come to the public meeting and ask those questions there as well, or we can get those answers for them. I'm going to ask the, normally I put Counselor McCabe on the spot at the planning board meetings, but because we have Mr. Adams here, I think I'll put him on the spot on the roads that you're referring to, and a little bit more clarification in terms of how this development can go forward. So over to you.
You wish to defer to the chief engineer? Okay. And this is part, we are going to a public consultation, so this will be brought up again, I'm sure. Chief Engineer?
Thank you, your worship. So, yes, there's kind of two parts to this. Yes, we did the West Royalty area, or commercial area master traffic plan. And that was looking at current conditions in the vicinity. So in the impact area, which included the bypass in Belvidere to the south, looked at traffic in Mount Edward Road and everything that was on University Avenue as well. So kind of that big quadrant there. We looked at current traffic impacts, future impacts of traffic without development, and then we added the development and modeled that, or our consultant did, to look at what we anticipate for future traffic demands. Because whatever we built in there for roads, we wanted to meet today, and, you know, 15 and 20 years from now, we want to be able to handle traffic quite well in that area. So that's what that plan was developed in. It was developed with the projection of a high-volume number of units like we're seeing being proposed in that area. I believe you're referring to the other matter is we do plan to do, likely next year, if everything's approved in the budget, a master study for Mount Edward Road, the entire length. Because we know we're having traffic concerns the entire length right from Longworth all the way to the bypass. So what was reviewed, a part of the West Royalty Commercial Area Master Traffic Plan would form part of the overall scope for the entire length of Mount Edward Road, so that we can have a future vision for that road. So as we start hitting those key targets in terms of traffic volume, then we can start planning for future construction, whatever that may look like at that time. So those are the kind of the two pieces of the puzzle that you're probably referring to.
And Chief Engineer, could you also just address the Ash Drive issue coming off Capital Drive?
Certainly. So for folks, so in the master plan for the area, for Spencer Drive, so when it connects to Mount Edward Road, the big change that we're going to see is to, if folks are coming off Ash Drive, so they're coming from Ash, from the residential area onto Mount Edward Road, they'll have full movement. They can go left, right, or straight. Now, the change is where, when people are trying to access Ash Drive, they'll only be able to access Ash Drive if you're heading northbound on Mount Edward Road. So it'll be a right-in-only from Mount Edward Road. All other directions will not be permitted to access the intersection, or access Ash Drive. And that's going to be done through a physical concrete, we call it kind of a pork chop byline. So it's a, almost a triangle shape, and it's physically a barrier. So if, there's only one lane that approaches that intersection, and that's the out, or the in movement into the intersection from Ash Drive.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Scott, for clarifying that. Because they still ask me, can you guarantee it? And I'm just like, well, I'll ask again, right? So at least now I have a guarantee that they won't be able to access that. And that certainly helps. But my second part of that was we had a public consultation a month ago, and we didn't have a whole lot of people show up. And I'm nervous because they keep calling me. And I say, well, there's a meeting coming up. Is there any way we can get it out to the residents again? Like, we struggle with that every time we have a public consultation, right? So I'm just looking to ask anybody to see if we can get it out to the residents, whether it's flyers or something, to make them aware of this, rather than them wake up 6 months down the road and say, well, I didn't know, right? So I just don't know what other way to do it.
Council Yankoff, or Deputy Mary Yankoff. And then Counsel Twill.
Counsel Dron, and you're correct, we struggle with this. We're bound by policy and procedure. So unless we're going to change the Planning Act and the zoning and development bylaw on how it dictates that we get these messaging out, again, that has to be changed before we can change the process to which we let residents know. Because if we don't do it the exact way, then we are open to an appeal. So it's our frustration.
Because he's been waiting patiently. Counsel Twill.
Thank you. Regarding the public consultation process, and of course, we're going to be entertaining a major development here, you know, just, I think, in the last year's report. So it speaks to not only a plan that the manager of Public Works has just referred to, a major plan for Mount Edward Road. But in that plan for Mount Edward Road, we need either sidewalks or an active transportation pathway on the west side of Mount Edward Road. Because currently, with all this development, it's extremely unsafe for the residents to try to cross Mount Edward Road to commute to the elementary school, Sherwood Elementary School, and other facilities and other amenities. You know, there's major parks. There's a lot of facilities that the residents would like to have access to. And I think that's got to be part of the plan. I know I've mentioned this to our manager. I'm going to keep bringing it up because we've got to make this a reality. It's gone on too long. People want to cross Mount Edward Road safely. They want to commute safely on Mount Edward Road. And we need to make it safer for cyclists, walkers, joggers, people with...
Rollerbladers.
Pardon me?
Rollerbladers. Rollerblading.
Yeah. Rollerblading, and people with, thanks for the interjection, and people with mobility challenges that find it very difficult. And they need to, you know, we want them, we want to be an all-inclusive community, then they have to be included, too. So we've got to make that happen. And I know our manager's listening, but we need to expedite that infrastructure ASP. So I'm going to continue to lobby to ensure that becomes a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Counsel Dron, did you want to follow up with something? You're good, you're good. Okay. Question? Questions called. All those in favor, for going to a public consultation, please put up your hand. Okay, those against? 9-1. Okay, did you want to read the next one?
Thank you, your worship. Planning Resolution Number Three, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix A Future Land Use Map of the City of Charlottetown from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and amend Appendix G Zoning Map of the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw from low-density residential zone to medium-density residential townhouse zone for the property located at 482 Queen Street, PID 371203, be approved.
Okay, question? Questions called. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, 10-0. Okay, CAO?
Okay, Planning Board Resolution Number Four, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to approve the development concept plan and amend Appendix B Comprehensive Development Area Parcels and permitted uses of the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw to allow for mixed-use residential development consisting of apartment buildings and townhouses for the properties at 257 Mount Edward Road, PID 390674, 261 Mount Edward Road, PID 390682, 265 Mount Edward Road, PID 390708, 269 Mount Edward Road, PID 390757, and Mount Edward Road Parcel with PID 390690. Amend Appendix A Future Land Use Map of the City of Charlottetown Official Plan from low-density residential to comprehensive planning area. And Appendix G Zoning Map of the Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw from R2S Low Density Residential Single Zone to CDA Comprehensive Development Area Zone for a portion of the properties located at 257 Mount Edward Road, PID 390674, 261 Mount Edward Road, PID 390682, 265 Mount Edward Road, whoops, sorry, PID 390708, 269 Mount Edward Road, PID 390757, and Mount Edward Road Parcel with PID 390690, and consolidate the properties at 257 Mount Edward Road, PID 390674, 261 Mount Edward Road, PID 390682, 265 Mount Edward Road, PID 390708, 269 Mount Edward Road, PID 390757, and parcel with PID 390690 be approved.
Maybe we should consolidate that in the overhaul of the zoning and development bylaw. Counsel Twill and Counsel McCabe?
First and foremost, I want to congratulate the developer for being proactive. Now, we had a public meeting at the Charlottetown Hotel, and it was good dialogue. It wasn't many residents from the immediate area. What really struck me was the developer, back in January, went door-to-door and was being proactive long before it came to the required public consultation process. So I think that's a real feather in his cap. And probably other developers can emulate the same strategy. He was in the field several months before it finally came to city council. And I believe if you talked to him, he might even made some adjustments to the features of the plan. So I want to wish the developer all the best, and I think this is a great development for the city.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Counsel McCabe?
Thank you, your worship. And with our chief engineer here, I just wanted to clarify for the public record part of the question that was brought up around the temporary access road closure at the time during our public meeting, making sure that there will actually be two access points in and out. I know there was some issue with other landowners in the area and whether or not they were going to open that road and stuff. So I just wanted to state it, if we could have someone, maybe, I don't know where our public chief engineer went, confirm that this is going to be in place prior to development. But I also agree with Counsel Twill. I think it's a great development. I have no problem. I just want to hear that that's not going to be an issue.
So do you want the chief engineer to go on public record again?
I do.
Wow, good. Pull up a chair there, chief engineer.
My apologies, I didn't catch which location you're referring to there.
For, it's the first development, I think, that the northwest, northeast, nor, you know what I mean?
North-south connector road.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, the plan shows that there is that north-south connector that will be going through there to connect between St. Martha's Court and to the new Spencer Drive extension. We'll be working on that. We have had discussions with the landowner on the north. We have, they're working on their Phase 3 as of right now. I think it has been floated around a little bit here. So there's been some discussions around there, and the city does have some tools to ensure that we get that land and have that connector at the end of the day.
Just follow up for that, sorry, second question. So the safety component is, the second access point will be in place, and the temporary access that they'll shut down won't impact having that second access for this development?
No, that's correct. That's the goal. We plan that everything kind of happens in sequence, that as the units start to take occupancy, both accesses will be open.
Okay. Question? Questions called, okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those against? 9-1. Counsel Dron opposed. Counsel, is that it? Number 5, thank you.
Planning Board Resolution Number 5, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix G Zoning Map of the zoning and development bylaw from single detached residential, R1L zone, to low-density residential, R2 zone, to construct a duplex at Lot 39 Oak Drive, PID 392396, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Questions called by Counsel Kevin Ramsey. All those in favor, please raise your hand. 10-0. Well, that does make a difference. Okay, you ready?
Planning Board Resolution Number 6, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the decision pertaining to the demolition permit 001-DEM-23 for 231 Richmond Street, PID 340703, not be reconsidered.
Okay. Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those against? Okay, 9-1, Counsel Twill opposed. Okay. Next one? Oh, this is the bylaws? Yeah. Good.
Okay, City of Charlottetown Amendment Official Plan PH-OPA.1. To adopt the official plan amendment PH-OPA.1-35, the land use for 48042 Queen Street, PID 371203, as shown on Appendix A Future Land Use Map of the City of Charlottetown Official Plan is designated as medium-density residential, hereby excluding it from its formal designation of low-density residential. Be it resolved that the official plan amendment PH-OPA.1-35, as it pertains to 48042 Queen Street, PID 371203, as attached, be adopted, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Okay. Shall I carry? Any opposed? Nope. 10-0.
Okay. Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH-ZD.2. To adopt bylaw, PH-ZD.2-70, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend Appendix G Zoning Map of the zoning and development bylaw for 48042 Queen Street, PID 371203, from low-density residential, R2S, zone to medium-density townhouse, R3T, zone. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH-ZD.2-70, as it pertains to 48042 Queen Street, PID 371203, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall I carry? Any opposed? Got another one there, too? Yep.
Thank you, your worship. City of Charlottetown Amendment Official Plan PH... City of Charlottetown Amendment Official Plan PH-OPA Point One, to adopt the official plan amendment PH-OPA dot one thirty-six, the land uses for portions of 257 Mount Edward Road, PID 390674, 261 Mount Edward Road, PID 390682, 265 Mount Edward Road, PID 390708, 269 Mount Edward Road, PID 390757, and Mount Edward Road parcel with PID 390690, as shown on appendix A future land use map of the City of Charlottetown official plan, is designated as a comprehensive planning area, hereby excluding it from its formal designation of low-density residential. Be it resolved that the official plan amendment PH-OPA dot one slash thirty-six, as it pertains to 257, 269 Mount Edward Road, as attached, be adopted, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff and seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall I carry? Opposed? Nine-one. Okay.
Zoning and Development Bylaw PH-ZD Point Two, to adopt PH-ZD Point Two seventy-one, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for the portions of 257 Mount Edward Road, PID 390674, 261 Mount Edward Road, PID 390682, 265 Mount Edward Road, PID 390708, 269 Mount Edward Road, PID 390757, and Mount Edward Road parcel with PID 390690, from low-density residential, R2S zone, to comprehensive development area, CDA zone, and appendix B comprehensive development area parcels and permitted uses for portions of 257 Mount Edward Road, 261 Mount Edward Road, 265 Mount Edward Road, 269 Mount Edward Road, and Mount Edward Road parcel with PID 397690, to allow for mixed-use residential development consisting of apartment buildings and townhouse. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw, PH-ZD Point Two dash seven-one, as it pertains to 257, 269 Mount Edward Road, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall I carry? Opposed, nine-one. Is that it for the report? Deputy Mayor Yankoff, thank you. CAO Eleanor, thank you kindly. Next report is Finance Audit Tendering Administration Committee, met August 9th in a regular meeting. Included in your package are draft minutes from that meeting, as well as the financial statements, capital project update for the first quarter, June 30th, 2023, also the open tender report, the BDO matrix update, and some information on the recent federal and provincial funding announcements report. There are also four resolutions included in this package for your consideration. Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Counselor Twill?
I have two questions. Can you give me a progress report as to where we're at with the bylaw concerning tendering?
Procurement bylaw.
Procurement bylaw, as you know, I've been pretty adamant about bylaw for procurements, so that it is truly open and transparent, not to say that our policies in the past haven't been open and transparent, because they have, but as we all know, in some cases we fail to follow those policies. But I think the bylaw will send a message out to the community that we're much more committed, much more committed to the bylaw, so just looking for an update on that, and I have another question concerning your report.
Counselor MacLeir.
Thanks for your question, Counselor Twill. As for the procurement bylaw update and where it's at, I know in our last committee meeting, that was brought up and discussed, and as I understand it, unless there's something different, Betty French, our finance manager's here, that is, I think that is on time as it's projected in the BDO matrix, and I think that we're looking at September, maybe, hopefully no later than October, to maybe have that, something to put to council, hopefully, to unless, Betty, Betty, do you want to maybe just share your update on that as well? Thank you.
Sure, there's some timelines that are listed in the BDO matrix update report, which is part of the finance committee package, and yes, the procurement and tendering policy is currently being worked on, and we intend, once staff has completed their work on it, to send it out to both legal and audit to get their comments as well, and it would be nice to be bringing it to September, but these things always take time, so I'm sure by October we'll have it brought to council.
Counselor, Counselor Twill?
Thank you.
Counselor MacLeir, I thought we discussed this, didn't we not? And it's not in the minutes? It's in the minutes? What page?
It's under the BDO matrix.
And it talks about the, okay.
Bylaws actively.
So it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Twill.
Right. So as you prepare this new bylaw for council's consideration, are you reaching out to other municipalities to do a jurisdictional scan, to ensure that it's contemporary in every sense of the word, and that all of the prerequisites are in place? I'm just wondering, you know, in your preparation, have you done a jurisdictional scan? And I do have one other question.
Have they done a jurisdictional scan?
Have you?
Oh, he has another question.
Yeah, I got another question, not related to that.
Could you just ask the question?
Okay.
Ask the two of them, then she can.
All right.
Do you want Betty to answer?
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't mind that.
You have to go through the chair.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, he's going to ask another question, John.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. Just to be clear, so you got your answer on the procurement thing? You satisfied with that?
No, I was wondering if there's a jurisdictional scan done in preparation of the bylaw with other municipalities across Canada.
Betty?
Thank you, Counselor MacLeir, and through to Counselor Twill. Yes, we are doing quite a bit of research, looking at procurement policies and similar policies and bylaws with other jurisdictions.
Okay, great. Thank you. My second question, second really, that was just a supplemental to the first, if you want to get technical.
Okay, no, Counselor Twill.
Seven.
She's ready.
Chief Administrative Officer Signing Authority and the Municipal Government Act. I read this, and I understand the CAO is looking for clearance to spend unilaterally up to a ceiling of $25,000. Could you please explain the rationale behind that request and what, I guess more specifically, what the reason is? I think in the past, it's been the mayor and the CAO that's signed, and if there's some type of emergency, correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't take long for the CAO to send an email out to all members of council, so city council's well-informed as to expenditure of that magnitude.
Counselor MacLeir.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. You're right, as the report affects, there was discussion on this at our last committee meeting at finance, and the way we left it is that I think that it's going to still be under consideration, and I think the, probably the intent will be for it probably to stay with two signatures going forward, the mayor and CAO, but that's not final yet, it's going to be under more discussion at the committee level.
Yeah. Thank you. Counselor MacLeir, I just want to say one thing. With Betty French, what she did with the update for the caper projects, it's on page 209, if you're using the digital, she shows all the caper projects that were expanded in 2022, 2023. Truthfully, that's the first time I've ever seen this, so thank you for doing that, and she's also given an update for June, up to June 30th of this year, so thank you for that, too. Got some resolutions?
Thank you, Your Worship. Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor MacLeir, seconded by Counselor McCabe, be it resolved that council reiterates to the Capital Area Recreation Incorporated that they have been given the fiduciary responsibility to operate the complex in a business-like manner, and in doing so should ensure that all tenants and users are treated fairly and equitably. And the city will enter into an agreement directly with Carey on the terms and conditions of this space after December 2023, on behalf of the Seniors Active Living Center, in the amount of $15,000 annually for 20 years, and the Seniors Active Living Center will be treated by Carey Management as a paying tenant by virtue of this agreement, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor Twill?
I believe I understand the intent for the Seniors Active for Living. With the facility that's been at Carey since the inception of Carey, the question I have is, are all the senior citizens in this city taking full advantage of the Carey facility? The Seniors Act for Living, the things that are, you know, the itinerary that they have on a weekly basis? I have to ask that question because we have many senior citizens in our community, and I wonder if they're afford at the same opportunity. A lot of our seniors don't have transportation, even though we do have a transit system, but I want to know if the majority of our citizens, our seniors, are first of all informed as to what the venue and the facility offers in terms of programming? How many of them are taking advantage of it? And what is the participation rate? I'd like to know that, because, I mean, we're doing this in behalf of Seniors Act for Living, but yet I really question, or I'd like to know, how many of our senior citizens are actually taking full advantage of this facility under this agreement?
Counselor MacLeir.
Thank you, Counselor Twill, for that question. It's a very broad question, and the reality is here in the chamber this evening, I can't give you an answer to that question, although I think it is something that perhaps we can take away and do some due diligence on that, and perhaps hopefully come back to you at another meeting and give you some data around that, if it's possible to research it and put it together, so. Great, thank you.
Okay. Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? No, 10-0. Okay.
Finance Audit Tendering Administration Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor MacLeir, seconded by Counselor McCabe, be it resolved that council retroactively approves the offer of services, general planning services from Dilling Consulting Limited in the amount of $50,000, signed by the Chief Administrative Officer on February 14th, 2023, and that council approve additional planning services from Dilling Consulting Limited in the amount of $30,000, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Counselor Twill and Counselor Duran.
Regarding this particular resolution and the additional $30,000, my first question is, did this go to tender, this additional $30,000? And as far as the work that's being offered to the City of Charlottetown, is it being offered five days a week, or is it still two days a week?
Counselor MacLeir.
Thank you, Counselor Twill, for that question. I'm going to defer to Eleanor, CAO, if I could, on that. Counselor Twill, thank you.
CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through to Counselor Twill. So this followed their procurement policy, so the line where it's in the city's interests, we couldn't go to tender because there's no one to go to tender to on the island, other than this firm. The requirement is for producing development permits, you have to be familiar with the city, and you have to be on-site to be able to come in and process the development permits. There's only one firm offering that right now, so there was no one to tender to, other than this firm. So we had the existing contract that was in place for $50,000, and this is now a request to extend that contract, essentially change the scope for an additional $30,000.
Counselor Duran first. Counselor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm just looking at this, and I, you know, I'm assuming this was a mistake when this was done previously about not going to council, but I believe we had discussion on it, and it was part of the BDO report that this will come to council now, if I'm not mistaken. I know at the time it didn't, but I'm glad it's coming here this time, so hopefully, you know, the BDO report was a report that we've learned from, and from now on, we'll get the proper procedures in place. Thank you. I just wanted to state that, Counselor MacLeir, if you're fine with that.
Did you want to speak to it there? Go ahead, Counselor MacLeir.
No, that's fine, Counselor Duran, good reiteration, thank you.
CAO Eleanor, did you want to respond?
Yeah.
I think she has to respond.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through to Counselor Duran. Yes, so the intent is, and this ties into an earlier question as well, that a signing authority bylaw be brought forward for the city and signed off on. Looking into this also caused us to look into the Municipal Government Act, section 156, which has to do with signing authority. So all that you've seen come here today is to follow in line exactly what we've been doing with the BDO report, making sure that we're following the Municipal Government Act, and we get the appropriate bylaws and policies in place to make sure that everyone is signing contracts and agreements as appropriate in terms of signing authority. Thank you.
Counselor Matar.
Thank you, Your Worship. If I understand correctly, these services were brought in to help with the backlog of permits, correct? So we're looking to extend it for additional $30,000 to, is that to kind of bring us up to a point that aligns with all the new positions that we recently have been hiring? Or do we anticipate that we are looking at this incrementally to see if we need to continue with this service, so we may next month see another 30 or further?
Counselor MacLeir?
Counselor MacLeir, sorry.
Counselor, or CAO Eleanor, can you answer that for Counselor Matar, please?
Through, Your Worship, to Counselor Matar. Yes, so this is just to get us to the stopgap. The new manager of development is starting on September 11th, and we have a new development planner starting on September 18th. Once we have the new staff in place, we will no longer be needing these contract services to help support us. Thank you.
Counselor Twill, you press a button there?
Yeah. Once again, so what we're doing here in essence is sole sourcing, just to one, to one firm, and we're doing that primarily because it's an island firm, we're not going off-island.
No.
Right? So, just so I understand, or maybe I'm incorrect.
Dylan's from the other side.
Pardon me?
Dylan's from Fredericton.
So Dylan is, so we are going off-island, right? So we are going off-island, and the question I did ask was, are they providing the service five days a week, or is it just two days a week?
Counselor MacLeir?
And what's? And what's, what's it been right from the beginning? Beginning of the contract?
Councilor McLeer? Do you want to just defer it?
Yeah. Defers to CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, Councilor McLeer, and through Your Worship to Councilor Twill. It is two days a week that they've been, two days equivalent a week that they have been putting in. I can't say if that's what they've been doing since they started the contract before my arrival here at the city and when we had a manager here, how often they were using them. But when we were down staff, that's how we brought them on to work. Dylan is not island-based, however, their planner is island-based and lives on the island here in Charlestown.
But it's just two days a week?
Just two days equivalent a week, so they may be working.
I'm sorry, I don't know what that means.
It means that they could work random hours throughout the week, but it's, it's the same as if they were putting in two days.
16 hours. So, 16 hours could be spread over four days, two days, five days. That's, that's what it means. And she works from home, which is in Charlestown.
$30,000.
Yeah. Well, it's not cheap. Okay. Question? Question called? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Those against? 9-1. Okay. Next one?
Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Councilor McLeer, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that council award the RFP for long-term debt to RBC with disbursement of funds to occur at $30 million in August and $20 million as needed. That the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Councilor Twill?
I've given to understand a meeting took place with the provincial government that, I think you yourself attended. I don't know who from senior management, whether it was a manager.
I was there.
So, in terms of trying to align ourselves with the province, in terms of getting a better rate, what was the conclusion of that meeting? And was the province open to such a, such a partnership?
Councilor McLeer?
Thank you, Councilor Twill, for, for the question and clarification. Yes, the, the attendees at the meeting were myself, Chair Finance, Manager Betty French, Mayor Brown. That was it. And, and I guess this got, the decision to go down the path to, to engage the province, Councilor Twill, and the rest of the chamber was to, it was brought up at the committee level by Councilor Duran and Mayor Brown, you know, about the possibility of engaging with the province to see if there could be any, any value or benefit to the city in terms of, you know, long-term financing, i.e., you know, you know, around bond financing. So, a meeting was facilitated, and, you know, it was, I don't know, I guess we probably met, met for an hour, and I'll have Betty speak to it a little bit more here in a few minutes. But we did meet with some senior people, you know, at the province. And at the short term, the, the outcome of that meeting, in a nutshell, as it relates to this particular piece of financing for $50 million, I don't think there's anything that's going to work on this particular thing, but it, it's probably an opportunity going forward to continue to collaborate with the province in terms of future long-term financing. There may be some, there may be some opportunity or value there. That remains, that's going to be an ongoing discussion. But for this particular piece of financing, what you have before you here is, what's going to be recommended is, you know, with RBC, because there was nothing as it related to this particular amount of financing, 50 million, that we could act on with the province at this time in the short term. That's not to say that there can't be value or opportunities going forward.
Betty, do you want to say something? You want to add any?
Sure. Thank you, Your Worship, through Your Worship to Councilor Twill. What the province indicated they would be able to offer would be their cost of borrowing plus a spread of 1%. And the bank solution that we're recommending is the bank's cost of borrowing plus a credit spread of 0.4%. So, that makes it 0.6% better than what the province was able to offer us.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the end of that, Betty.
That, so the province is offering, they would add 1% to whatever their cost of borrowing was, and the five years that we're looking at, the five-year term we're looking at from the bank, is a 0.4% additional cost. So, the pro, the cost from the province would be 0.6% more than what it is from the bank.
And Councilor Twill, as, as Councilor McLeer stated, this is just, we're going to try to continue looking at the bond issue through the province because of their credit rating, but that's not for this point. No, it's a good question. It is.
When you think about a $50 million expenditure.
Yeah. No, it is.
I thought maybe, you know, the province talks about working harmoniously with the city and vice versa. I thought there could be a better, a better arrangement.
Yeah. Well, we'll keep that door open. Question called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. 10-0. Okay. Another one there, CAO? Okay.
Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Committee Resolution Number Four, moved by Councilor McLeer, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that council approves the insurance renewal for July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, as presented by Cook Insurance Marsh Canada in the amount of $904,049, and approve the long-term commitment option for the next two years. And the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. Council Ramsey, thank you very much. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. 10-0. Is that it? CAO? For resolutions? Is that it? Councilor McLeer? Good? Thank you, sir. Thank you kindly. Human Resources, Councilor Justin Matar?
Thank you, Your Worship. The Human Resource Committee did not meet since our last monthly meeting of council, so therefore, there are no resolutions for you this evening. Your pack, the meeting minutes from the previous meeting are in there. I'd also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the city of Charlestown celebrated Staff Appreciation Day on Wednesday, August 9th, with a barbecue. And this event is held to recognize the contributions of all city staff. So, despite the rain, it was a great turnout. It was lots of fun. There was some food, and there was a lot of great prizes. So, on behalf of myself and my fellow counselors, I would like to extend our appreciation and gratitude to all of the city staff for their hard work, dedication, and support for their public service in the city of Charlestown. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Matar. And it was a good party. Okay. We can move on to police. Protective Emergent Services, Council Ramsey?
Thank you, Your Worship. We met on July 25th. The minutes are included in your package. There are two resolutions for your consideration, and willing to try and answer every question. Thank you.
Councilor Duran? Councilor Twill?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Council Ramsey, for your report. I remember last month here in the chamber when we tried to defer a, a resolution of the unsightly bylaws or premises or buildings or whatever. You said we're going to deal with one building this month, and we'll deal with another building the next month until we get them through. Now, we're here. There's, there's no indication. I, I read in the minutes that you're looking at it, but under the oppression of I had last month, you were going to take one building a month for the next 15 months and, and treat them all fairly. So, when we're here tonight, I don't see anything in the minutes. I don't see any progression, except, you know, one of the staff is looking after it. Where is your direction in dealing with an unsightly property every month for the next 15 months? Thank you.
Council Ramsey?
Thank you for that question, Council Duran. We are meeting next week, and there is some properties on the list starting next week. It's just the way the whole, we met the 25th, and then there wasn't, we didn't have a meeting since then, but we are meeting on the 24th, I believe, of next week, and there's going to be properties on that that we are going to be moving forward. Thank you.
Council Duran?
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'm asking for a list of properties to distribute it to counselors, so we know what's coming. You know, I understand it takes a lot of time, but, I mean, I, I sat here and, and asked for a deferral last month, and you were adamant that we're going to be treating every place equally as harsh as we did the last one. So, to put it off for another month, you know, I, I want those properties. I want the list of the properties, and I want a property listed every month and the work that we're doing on it. Like you said, that was the indication to me. And it's very upsetting when, when I sat here last month asking for some delays, some deferrals, some compassion, and I wasn't given any, and then to turn around this month and say, well, we're going to deal with it next month. It's very frustrating, and I'm very upset. So, can, can you get that 15 properties that, that was supposed to be on the agenda and the next one that we're dealing with? And that's all I have to say about it. It, it was supposed to be equal for the next 15 months, and, and I'm very frustrated in that. Thank you.
Okay. Council Ramsey?
Thank you for that, and I understand your frustrations, and it's operational once it's moved on to us. And our police chief and our fire chief are both dealing with these, and our bylaw officers, and we're going from there. And I understand your frustration. And chiefs, if you want anything to add to it, or we want to wait till our meeting this week? Thank you.
Chief? Chief chief?
Excuse me. Your Worship, Council Duran, Chair. I can assure you that we've instructed our bylaw officer to create a list of these properties, also to create a chronological list of activities associated to each and every property and the progression forward. And I can assure you that there's no preferential treatment or no, no one treated out of the ordinary in the execution of, of these bylaws. And we're committed to, to that fairness and transparency, and we'll, we can provide that list through the committee at the next meeting.
Okay. Council Matar?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Council Ramsey, to Councilor Duran, it kind of got to me before my question, but I also have the same, I had the same expectations coming here this evening that we would see a movement towards the 13 to 15 properties that we identified on a list or list that we have not actually seen at this point in time. So, again, I want to reiterate, I think it's important that we move forward as we discussed in great length. There was lots of debate over this topic. The property on University Avenue was, as I indicated, was like a catalyst to what we were going to do. And we were going to apply the same lenses and, and policies and procedures towards the, these other unsightly and unsafe properties. So, I will say as well, I was surprised that there was not anything on a list to move forward and have discussion here tonight on.
Council Twill? Or do you want to answer to that, Council Ramsey?
No. Or yes, I will answer. He just said, I don't have the, we're getting the list by our bylaw officer now, and we're getting it in place, and I don't know, like, like I'm, I, I don't get involved in operational, so like, I'm not going to tell our bylaw officer to have it here yesterday and things along that line. It was discussed at our last meeting. It's going to be discussed next week. We're going to have a list for everybody and go from there. I, I tried to pass out the list at our meeting two months ago, and some people didn't want it. So, we're just going to go from there. Thank you.
Council Twill?
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the topic that was introduced under planning, and that is the situation at the Outreach Center on Houston Street. And it speaks more broadly to what's happening in the streets of Charlestown. Vandalism, trespassing, intimidation, fighting. There was a lady, as we all know, it was reported in the press, that was, was beaten by three individuals. You'd think she went 10 rounds at Mike Tyson, laid on the sidewalk for three hours before she finally got some help. So, a number of things are happening on the streets in this city. And in my mind, it's the number one issue in this city. Drug usage, drug sales, drug houses. And for whatever reason, I keep hearing, well, it's really a perception. Really a perception. Well, not according to the residents I've talked to. It's not a perception, it's reality. So, what I'm looking for here is a commitment from Protective Services Committee, the departments, to commit with a plan, a real plan. Start enforcing the laws in this city and this province, and start holding these people accountable. What's happening is, good, honest, decent taxpayers, pick it up every day, go to work, raise their families, trying to make ends meet, are being penalized, are being harassed on their own property. People trespassing, doing drugs, among other things that are happening. This has gone on too long in the city of Charlestown. Much too long. It's not acceptable. It's not going to be tolerated. And I can tell you, the residents are mobilizing. They're mobilizing. The voices are getting louder. They're not going to take it anymore.
Yeah.
So, having said that, one of the concerns I have, and I said it earlier about that facility being in between two city schools, has anyone contacted the child and youth advocate to get their perspective on having to commute, commute back and forth in front of that facility with the amount of drugs that are being sold, amount of drugs that are being used, and drug paraphernalia that's being distributed? Who gave the authority to the NGOs to pass out drug paraphernalia? Did anyone here in the city of Charlestown give the green light or give approval? I'd like to know that. Where is the process? Where's the permits? Where's the authorization? What is happening in our city? What is happening? Why can't people that pay taxes get in return the quality of life that they're paying for? Because we're not giving it to them, folks. We're not giving it to them. And they're upset. Houses are, are going up for sale, and people are moving out of the downtown. Some are just moving out of the city altogether. This is, this has happened already in all of our street ever since that facility opened up. And what I get from, it's, I, I look at the.
Council Twill, one minute. Half a minute, come on.
Okay. I look at the comments made from representation from the adventure group, and, well, it was like this before we arrived. What kind of a reckless, irresponsible, insulting comment is that? That, to my mind, is nothing but self-gratification and vested interest at best.
Okay.
And I think it's a tragedy. I think it's a shame. There should be an apology.
Yeah.
Should be an apology to residents of that community. People lived and built that community. What an insult.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilor. Council Twill, if you go in your package, the digital form, page 291, it lists all the crimes, property crimes, municipal bylaws, everything that has, all the infractions. So, and that information is online.
You don't want, Mr. Mayor?
No, no, let me just finish. No, no, you, you spoke, you spoke. So, just want to make sure that those, that information is online.
Yeah.
Council, Council Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thanks again, once again, Council Ramsey, for your report. And, you know, I, I think I, I said everything I had to say at, at planning to try to get this, this place under wraps. I know it's, it's hard to police. I understand that. I'm wondering. I'm wondering if we can get a camera in place to watch the vicinity of that area, if there's not one. I mean, I drive by pretty near every day, I see frequent urination outside. Tonight, I seen a bunch of bicycles all there, like 50 bicycles. I can't understand that. You know, people hanging around. If they need treatment, I understand they should go in and get treatment or get help for resumes. You know, I could go on and on and say what Counsel Twill said, but I'll leave it at that. There's one thing that bothers me here, you know, and it kind of, it's struggle, I struggle with it because I'd be terrified. One of our residents told a person to pick up the garbage, and they were threatened. I know, you know, when there was a gentleman that was all worked up at the public meeting, tried to talk to the minister, and he was charged. I'm wondering if this person, this individual that was on the bike, that threatened to cut the man's throat and, you know, come back with other people, I don't know how that man would sleep that night, and I, well, I think of myself and my family, you know, how would, if someone was outside of my front door and threatened me like that, I think I'd be on the phone right away to the police and have that man arrested. Can anyone tell me, I know you could say it's operational, but I feel for that man, you know, he was trying to film, and I'm, I feel that, you know, for someone to say that, that they're coming back, I don't think you would sleep very well that night. And I think, you know, if we, if we charge a person for touching a person, but for a life-threatening, you know, to come back and kill that person, you know, that person should be in jail. So I'm just wondering, can anybody answer that, if that, if that man was charged or not? Thank you.
Counsel Ramsey?
I certainly cannot answer that question whether he's charged or not, but I agree 100% what you're saying. I drive by the place every day too, and I seen that video, and I'm like you, like, if that happened in my front yard, I mean, you don't know what you would do, because you've got your family there and your house there, and Counsel Twill, I agree with everything you're saying. What we've been asking, and I meet with the police chief every week, and we just go over things, in fact, we met this afternoon, and I just said, what is the story for this and that? And he's just trying to explain it to me also, and it's just, it's crazy. It's just, but I asked the deputy mayor and the mayor last week if and when they meet with the province, with the ministers, which they did. Here are my list of questions. We want a long-term plan, and what the province is going to do, then our police force can work on that too, with their plan, and saying, okay, this is what we're going to be doing in two to three weeks, or three months down the road, and things along that line, and how many people are from off-island that are going there? That is my other thing. That really annoys me, so somebody dropped the ball on this thing above us, and it has to be sort of picked up again, but we knew last year, when they're in and they ask for that variance, and I asked that one question to Minister McKay, McKay asked him, once it's in Charlestown, is it a Charlestown issue then? You're going to forget about it. He has yet to answer me yet, and this is what happened. It's a Charlestown issue, we're using our sources out there, as I'm going to preach for the last four years, I'm going to keep preaching again, we need more officers, we got to hire more officers, and things along that line, so then maybe we can do, go down this road and make things safer, and not just Ward Four, but all wards. So that's my rant. Thank you.
Chief, is there cameras in front of the center? We'll just find out.
Yes, Your Worship, the province had sponsored cameras to help us, you know, certainly monitor and as a crime prevention method in front of the Outreach Center, so there is, there is that capacity.
Okay. Counsel Pritchard.
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, I, a lot of the same comments, but I think, you know, what we're looking at here is, you know, we're focusing, a lot of the focus is in front of the Outreach Center, it's clearly visible, but I think what, what is being challenged is the migration, it's starting to happen and moving throughout the communities, becoming more widespread, and we're seeing it coming right up to the front door of people's homes. As per Counsel Dron's comments around the video, you know, we're seeing it in people's backyards directly, it's happening in all forms, and it's become, it's not, you know, I thought at one point it was, it was becoming a problem, it is a problem. It's not becoming a problem anymore, it clearly is a problem, and I think, again, I'll reiterate, I think we need to do everything that we can to address this, to work with the residents, you know, the vulnerable population themselves, like, and try to come up with a way in which we can curb this, you know, unwanted behavior in the communities, and, you know, and not put things in place that allow for that. I know that there's a motion, or a notice of motion, I think it's probably at the point now, where I don't know if we should be talking about that as opposed to when new business, because I think it's going to address, and again, I don't know what is, so hopefully it addresses our concerns around additional policing and the things that we need in support from the, from the police and emergency services, but if this is about needing more bodies on the police force, then let's do it. Let's figure out that, let's get the budget forward. If we need 10 more people, let's put the money there, we'll take from something, we'll work that out, because we can't just keep using the same things that we don't have enough police force, we don't have enough this, we don't have enough that. It is our responsibility to ensure that the safety and protection of our residents is at the forefront of things we do, and as a council, we can make those decisions to increase budget, increase workforce, whatever we need to do that, because this is becoming a serious problem. It is a serious problem, sorry, and it's, it's spreading. So I appreciate that up at the Outreach Center, but it's spreading and it's all over now, so we need to, we need to address this quickly.
Let's move on to the resolutions.
Yes, two resolutions, sorry.
Two resolutions. And they're debris, dangerous or otherwise cleanup, is that right?
Yes, Your Worship. If you wanted to bring up the full resolution on the screen. Well, how you're going to change them?
Well, I just didn't know if you wanted to read. I was just going to-
Oh, yeah, I'll just read it.
Okay. Good.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to explain this resolution, we're just going to edit it a little bit, there's a lot of detail in there that maybe doesn't need to be in there, so please bear with me as I move through this edited version of this resolution. Protective and Emergency Services Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counsel Beck. Be it resolved that the Public Works Manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any trees, garbage, and other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of the same at the owner's expense at the following properties located at 240 Hillsborough Tree, Street, PID 346585. Warning posted on June 23, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 108 Scarlet Avenue, PID 520544. Warning issued to owner on June 30, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 3 Gates Drive, PID 613489. Warning posted on July 13, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 4 Ferndale Drive, PID 416172. Warning posted on June 22, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 31 Kirkwood Drive, PID 370841. Posted warning on June 22, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 40 Hutchison Court, PID 588301. Posted warning on July 13, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 26 Glenthorn Avenue, PID 756015. Posted warning on June 23, June 23, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 213 Belvedere Avenue, PID 395053. Posted warning on June 21, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 35 Alice Street, PID 1145903. Posted warning on July 18, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 7577 Bradley Point Road, PID 396309. Posted warning on June 16, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 80 Massey Drive, PID 777508. Posted warning on July 13, 2023. Satisfaction action to resolve the issue not taken. 19 Young Street, PID 369124. Posted on, posted warning on July 17, 2023. Satisfactory action not taken to resolve the issue not taken. 25 Andrews Court. Posted warning on July 17, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 55 Westridge Crescent, PID 794685. Posted warning on July 7, 2023. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken, in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Bylaw of the City of Charlestown.
Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. You noticed a long list. Last month, the list was just as long, I believe there was 14 properties. Lot of them are repeat, or not a lot of them, some are repeat, and I would love to take this out of council's hands and just have our bylaw officer go do his job. We discussed this at police and then, and with the CAO. I think we're working on a plan, I hope if anyone has any input on it, that, you know, as I stated at our meeting, we can put a lien against these properties, but if someone's going to be living there for 40 years, well, our city crews and everything is going to be still paying in 40 years' time. We're not getting our money back, and why should we be tying up our public works to go in there and do it? And if my property is like that, and they, and if they come and clean it up in two or three weeks' time, well, then I can let it go again, because then old city hall is going to come clean it up again, or public works. And that's not fair to our staff, we can be using our resources other places, and you don't know what they're going to be picking up also. So this is what I'm just saying, and I met with the bylaw officer today, and with today alone, he's at with eight, you get eight more different properties, just today. So it's going to be coming and coming every month, and I got no answers for it anymore. People don't want to, with the housing situation, you'd think people would look after their houses and their properties, but some just don't care, and we got to hit them somewhere where it's going to hurt, in their pocketbooks. And how we do it, I don't know if it's against the sewer and water bill or something, but we got to do it, just leaning against properties is not working. Thank you.
Counsel Beck.
Oh, she clicked off. Thank you for that. Thank you for your report, Counsel Ramsey. Through, I just have a question, and it kind of tags into what Counsel Ramsey was saying, where we're, we have repeat offenders, we have habitual offenders, we're going back doing the same thing. And one of the things that we did talk about was, I guess, maybe empowering or giving the authority of the bylaw officer to do the job, take us out of the equation, because really, what's happening is, by and large, we're coming here, rubber stamping them, it's taken two to four weeks longer, maybe even longer in some instances to deal, to remediate the situation. The question that we, the one thing that we did have, my understanding is, is that there was, there is a draft bylaw to amend that, to give some of that power, and maybe if I could direct a question to CAO Eleanor, to maybe update as to where we are with that, because I think this is something that we have to get moving along, I mean, I've noticed myself, driving around, seeing a lot of these properties. So is there a way that we can, or can you provide an update, CAO Eleanor, as to where we are in terms of moving that along? And maybe there is anything more, but I think this is something really, I think we have to put a bit of a press on, to try and come up with changes to how we do our business.
Good, Counsel Mc, Counsel Ramsey, okay. CAO?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through to Counsel Beck. My understand, my understanding is that the policy is, is being worked on, is being worked on out of police services, there's only one person there who works on policy, and they've been quite busy. So a lot of the resources have been taken up. I know we want to see this changed, it's just taking a little bit more time, because it comes down to one person being able to do all this work. Thank you.
So, CAO Eleanor, would it be not just an expansion of our summary proceedings bylaw? It's already there, like, for, Street vendors bylaw, 3.1 unauthorized parking of vehicles, maximum fine $500 for 30 days, like, can't we just, like, is that, Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, Your Worship, you're certainly on the right path there. There certainly has to be a mechanism in place and make it feasible for that to happen, but also a certain amount of recourse from the city if those fines aren't paid, so there needs to be amendments to allow that to happen. And certainly, I'm supportive of the chair's and the other councils' position on streamlining the process with the bylaw officer, allowing him to have an increased level of decision-making, but also be cognizant of the council's awareness to these issues, because if things do escalate to where a council needs to intervene, they need to be aware that it didn't start at that point, and so we would be very mindful of that if that process was endorsed.
Yeah, and the bylaw has a summary offense ticket too, so everything's right there, it's just, we just have to amend it so we can follow up on those that don't pay, correct? Is that what it is?
Yes, Your Worship, we have one of the finest legal capacities in the city to rely on to help us with our bylaws, so we'll certainly, we'll be talking to them and have been talking to them.
He's also working on the summary offense ticketing system for the STRs. Okay. Question? Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay.
Protective and Emergency Services Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counsel Beck. Be it resolved that the Public Works Manager be authorized to remove one derelict vehicle as defined under the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Bylaw, Section 3.6, at the owner's expense on the property located at 26 Glenthorn Avenue, PID 556015, in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Bylaw of the City of Charlestown.
Question? All those in favor? 10-0. Okay. That's it. Counsel Ramsey? Thank you, sir. Parks, Recreation, Leisure Activities? Counsel Twill?
Thank you. As you can recall, council entertained three resolutions at the special, special meeting of council back two or three weeks ago. All those resolutions passed, so we're waiting for our next Parks and Recreation meeting, which I believe will be held August 31. If there's any issues or any, anything you'd like to talk about, please feel free, and we have our acting manager here tonight, Chris Drummond. Thank you.
Counsel Beck? Thank you for your report, Counsel Twill. I was drawn to a comment in there about the, the discussion that Mayor Brown, I'd like to get an update on the Plan B for active transportation for Terry Fox Drive. I know that was on our Capitol Projects-
Last year too.
Yeah.
The year before.
So, is there something, is there some kind of, is there something that maybe we need to be aware about with that? That was, just sort of jumped out at me from the minutes from that meeting.
Sure. Well-
Christopher, you correctly come wrong, but I don't think it made the list.
Yeah, it's on the list.
Oh, it's on the list?
Oh, yeah, it's on the list for the last two or three years.
No, 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 I'm talking about the province. Did the province come on board and help us with the funding? Christopher?
Your Worship, as far as I understand, the funding was not approved through the active transportation request that was made to the province. To speak to where that project is now, I am not sure, but I can take that under advisement and bring it back when the manager is, returns to the office.
Well, I know with other active transportation pathways, we didn't get the funding, but we went ahead with the project. Towers Road is one. We're doing that completely out of our budget in public work, so, like, this is a required, like, the province has already put theirs in, from the old Ben Arsenault Park Lot down to Fitz Royce, or down to- to Fitz Royce, or down to Terry Fox Drive. This would just be an added, an extended boardwalk from the end of Ambrose Street. That's what you're talking about, right, Counsel Beck? Go ahead.
Yeah, that's exactly it. And it came really, I think, more on a part active transportation, part safety.
Yeah.
That area, if you're unfamiliar with it, it goes at street level, then it goes up in a grassy area, then it goes over on the other side of Terry Fox Drive on a grassy area. The idea was that we would remediate that part, make it safer access, because it really is, it's a path that everyone takes that would eventually link into a future active transportation path. So the idea was that, it was kind of not really, it was part of a long-term active transportation link, but for the immediate short term, it's been an ongoing situation that I've had from residents who are concerned about the safety, in all seasons, really. When it's rainy, it's slippery. When it's in the wintertime, it's frozen. You're coming onto a busy street with Brighton Road. So it's kind of a two-part, two-part process, but that's kind of why I wanted to see it in that work being done. And that's came out of concern from residents that I had heard from, who were looking for having that part addressed. So it's kind of, it's kind of active transportation, but it's also street safety, I think, if you will, too.
Counsel Twill.
Yes. Just to confirm, it did make the list in terms of the province making a contribution or participating with, with that particular venue. I don't disagree with what you're saying. And as far as the land goes, correct me if I'm wrong, is that land owned by the province?
Yes.
Okay. So, so we have received permission from the province to go ahead and construct the venue?
I, I don't think so, because we don't, we don't have that shared funding, but other active transportation pathways, we didn't wait for the.
No, I understand that, but I'm just, like, I'm for the project.
Yeah, I know you are.
That's, that's not the, that's not the issue here, is that, number one, the province didn't come to the table, and number two, property is owned by the provincial government. So anyway, Counsel Beck, we will take this back to Parks and Rec, and I will give you an update.
Thank you, Counsel Twill.
Anyone else?
Good, good report. Good report. It's 7:00. Okay. Water and wastewater utility, Counsel Bob Duran and Mr. Richard McCune.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on July 13th, and the minutes from that meeting are somewhat short, but they're in your package. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them as best I can. I do not have any resolutions for your consideration tonight, so feel free to ask anything you want in the Water and Sewer Department. Thank you.
This is his own committee.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that the management, and in particular, the job that the guys are doing, going down the streets, working below, below, below grade is difficult work, and they, they have a tough job. And that department's an extremely busy department. One of the issues that keeps arising is I've always been in favor of a crew that's totally dedicated to looking at manhole covers and doing retrofits. A lot of manholes covers, and same thing with some of our catch basins, a lot of them are loose, vehicles are driving over them, you hear the noise, and I know it's maintenance work, but that work has to also be completed as well. And has there ever been any thought given to a specific crew that's just mandated to, to look after catch basins and, and manhole covers throughout the city of Charlottetown? I know that we've had some issues on some of the main streets here in the city, and I had to constantly work with both Public Works and Water and Sewer to ensure that some of those deficiencies are corrected. Sometimes it causes a lot of noise, particularly if residents live nearby, especially senior citizens, and it's very annoying and very troublesome for a lot of the residents that are trying to get a good night's sleep or want to take a nap in the afternoon with that noisy infrastructure. So any thought given to partnering with Public Works and having a crew that's totally dedicated to correcting those deficiencies?
Counsel Duran. Just one's on, Counsel Duran, we'll chime in there. There you are, sir.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor Brown.
You got an answer?
Yep, thank you. I certainly have a, an answer for that. Definitely not. We, we've never talked about a specific crew just to look at catch basins. As you know, the Water and Sewer Department doesn't do any paving around these catch basins or anything now. They fix them, and then they, they flag it for Public Works. You know, we, like, you know, the cost of manpower, I, I don't think it would be advantageous to our department to have a crew specifically do that, but if they're in their area, I'm sure they note it. They'll pass it on to Public Works to, to pave around it, but if it needs to be fixed, they'll fix it. But feel free, if someone has an issue about a noise or a bad, bad pipe, to give Water and Sewer a call, I'm sure they'll fix it right away. Thank you.
Second time, Counsel Twill.
It wasn't just catch basins. Counsel Duran was also manhole covers as well, which is under the responsibility of Water and Sewer. I just think the way with the city's growing, all the traffic that's on the city streets, I think we need to be more proactive as opposed to being reactive. Anyway, could you please take that under advisement and maybe have a discussion with our manager of Water and Sewer, and maybe there could be some type of correlation with Public Works? You know, the deficiencies are there, and, and I do believe they need to be addressed. I really do. So maybe, maybe there can be a plan to deal with these deficiencies.
Okay, Counsel Duran, go ahead.
Yes, no problem. We'll discuss it at our committee meeting. The manager's sitting here, I don't want to bother him, put him on the spot with that right now, but I'm sure we can have a quick discussion at our next meeting, see if, if that's an issue.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. No resolutions. Public Works. Counsel Julie McCabe.
On the 26th of July, the draft minutes are included in your package. There will be eight resolutions coming forward tonight. I just want to give a special shout out, on August 9th, we had the opportunity to tour the new Public Works building out off Prairie Point Road for, that will house our Parks and Rec as well as our utility staff in the coming years. It's the first net zero building to be designed and implemented here. And Scott and Albert and all your staff and crew, we provided a great tour and really excited to see, see that progress and see how much we save as a city of Charlottetown as a result of our new net zero building. If there's any questions, as the resolutions come forward, I'll do my best to answer, and Scott's here as well.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you. Thank you, Worship. Counsel McCabe, and I know we had a brief discussion on this, this is speed hump addition to the policy, I guess, that, that your, I think your committee is looking for, is it direction given by committee? So is there an issue with the speed hump policy that's there now that would get you guys to give direction to put these changes in place?
Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, well, staff had brought forward the recommendation to look at, we did approve the speed hump policy back in 2020, I believe, or 21?
19.
19, okay. And then, I guess, you know, as part of good practice, we're always looking at our policies and seeing which ones we can improve and implement and change a little bit, and through discussion and recommendation from the staff, that came to our committee to be discussed. And once the resolution gets read for the amendment, we can certainly have discussion on, on what that, if there's concerns around it.
Yeah, I do have concerns around it.
Second time.
Do you want to bring the resolutions on the floor?
Yeah, do you want to bring it up, one of the resolutions? Yeah, good. Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Counsel McCabe, for your report. I just have a couple of questions. These are kind of operational. It's nothing to do with the committee. It's, it's, it's asking questions. I mean, sometimes you email the manager for, you know, a request, and I understand, it takes time, and, and, you know, that, that's fine. I mean, everything takes time. Everybody's busy. I have a couple of issues that I, I'd just like to address because, you know, I've, I've asked them a few months ago about a stoplight on the corner where Towers Road and Mount Edward Road meet Montgomery. And a lady's been in an accident three times, and I try to go down that street now to get a feel for it. And, and what happens is, if you're turning left, the person ahead of you can either come right, turn right, or left. So you're, you're kind of gauging everything. And the lady, you know, she, she's asked me to bring it up. I, I brought it up last month. I've, I've emailed a couple of times, but I'm not getting anywhere with it, you know. So the lady asked me again, you know, what are you doing for it, Bob? And I'm saying, listen, I'm, I'm doing my best. I'm putting the questions. You know, I, I just don't know what else to do. You know, I think I talked about Scott, and he said he's going, he's going to look into it. It takes a little bit of time to change lights and things, but can, can you give me an update on where we could possibly be with that one?
Counsel McCabe.
Not through, as Counsel McCabe wouldn't know.
Yep. Just going to ask.
Just ask the manager, if that's, if that's okay.
Counsel McCabe.
Know she want to talk about it.
Yeah. Hold on, go ahead there, Counsel McCabe.
Obviously, I don't know about it, and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to get communication back. I'm sure they're working diligently to do proper assessment and review. My guess would be Towers Road's pretty narrow, so I don't know how you're going to have multiple laneways, but I'm not an engineer, I'm a school counselor, so I'm going to let the manager talk.
Just to discuss, it's, I'm not looking for a laneway. It's, it's coming Montgomery, coming off Montgomery, turning left. Like, you can, you can turn right very easily, but when you're coming to turn left, that's when you get all the traffic coming straight, right, or left. So she's asking for a, a left turning light from Montgomery onto Mount Edward because of, she's been in three accidents three times. So that's, that's where we're at. I'm just wondering.
Okay, do you want to go through the manager?
I think that would be.
Yeah, okay. Counsel Duran, can you just sit down?
I just have a couple more questions here.
Okay, why don't you put them all on, on the floor?
That'd be awesome.
Can you? Thank you.
Again, I, I had residents ask about potholes. So I said, okay, you know, there was, there was a bunch of potholes on the lower end of Cedar, and we waited, you know, a few weeks, which was pretty reasonable. I was quite delighted they were filled last week. But on Fulton Drive, one resident there, he's got three potholes, he's asked me for two months now, and then he got the whole street to, to phone me. So everyone on the street has called and asked to fill these potholes and to pave the street. So I, I said, look, I'll ask it tonight and see if we could get back to it. The second one was the brickwork at Cody Banks. You, you were kind enough after the last time to say, we're looking at a long-term plan to see what could be done, but I was up there again yesterday, and, and the bricks have been, fell on the ground since the fir-, well, I guess it must have been since the snow removal, so we can't, we can't fix them. And the same is at 116 Maple. Couple of bricks fell into the guy's driveway, and, and he's asking me. So those are just the, the three questions that I'd like some direction on. You know, I, I know it's, you, you would get it from 100 people, but I get it from 100 people, too, asking these questions, so I'm just wondering if you could answer them for me. Thank you.
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. And, and because these are basically operational questions, Counsel Duran, and I know since you're probably getting a little frustrated if you're not feeling you're being responded to, but if I could recommend maybe going through our CAO with an email with the manager again as a reminder, it might be better time spent than having these particular ward discussions on the floor this evening, moving forward, but, I mean, I'm just, that's just my, my recommendation moving forward, and maybe CAO, you'd be able to help with that.
CAO Eleanor, you can follow up on that.
Thank you, Worship. I think this is something that the manager could look into and get back to you on. It's, it's sometimes difficult when you're asked questions on the spot to have all your answers ready for you, but we can certainly take that away and provide you the answers you need. Thank you.
Just, just a response to that. I certainly understand, and I don't want to put them on the spot, but, but I've asked the questions, and, you know, I, I've been getting delayed, and I don't want to say, okay, Scott, you're not answering me, I'm going to the CAO. What is the best pass, or best practice to do? You know what I mean? Like, I'm, I'm just like, I'm frustrated after a couple of months, that's why I'm asking it here. So I'm sure Scott will give me a great answer tomorrow, and, and, you know, I wouldn't worry about it, but I told the residents I'd ask for it here tonight.
And you brought it up.
Thank you.
Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. Two questions for the chair. First one, just wondering if there's a status on the flashing lights that had come in earlier in the spring? They were going to be set up, and there was a list coming out of the streets that were getting them, and I'm just wondering where they are in that. The second one, I met with the chair of the new rink that's going out at the Winslow Lions Club this week, and they're wondering if the Public Works would look at putting a crosswalk at the lights at Campbell Road and Malpec Road for residents to cross over to the rink, or flashing lights. Is that us, or is that the province?
Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, I can't remember the first question already. The first question was.
Flashlights.
Flashing lights, and I think, Scott, maybe what we can do is put out an update just with the, in the next little bit to kind of update all of council, where they are. I know you've been working to get them in as they're coming in, because I've seen them in, placed in different areas of the city. And as far as the crosswalk on the highway, I don't have the answer to that. You're going to have to.
Your Worship, we'd have to look at the jurisdictional boundaries to see who that would be up to, so we can look into that and see if that would be our responsibility or the province.
But Malpec Road is, the province is out there, right?
Yeah, I believe so, that portion, yes, yep. So it probably, it's likely the province, but we'll, we can confirm that.
Counsel McKinnon? Okay. First resolution? Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor MacLeir. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of public tender for pole-mounted Christmas wreaths, the slow submission of classic displays in the amount of $11,330 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'd just like to talk about this, you know, I understand, I was wondering if we were all going to get one. There's 11 of them, so I thought each ward, but then when I read the background, it's all for downtown. As you go around the wards at Christmas time, you know, there's beautiful lights in various different areas, so I'm just wondering, I'll certainly be supporting this resolution for, for more Christmas lights, but can the Christmas lights this year be looked at that could be equal for every ward? You know, if you're getting four snowflakes, I want four snor, snowflakes, or even three. I won't be greedy. But, but I, I can't sit back and say, okay, we're giving 10 to a certain ward and none to another ward, or one. So I'm just, I'm just looking at this resolution, I'll certainly pass it, but I'm asking the chair to look at the committee to see if it can be even for everybody, or close to being even. Thank you.
And what about a Santa Claus? Do you want a Santa Claus?
So, thanks.
Brinch, whatever I can get. That's all we get anyway.
Oh, no, 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 no. Let, let the chair answer.
So what I can tell you about the tender that's coming forward tonight, these are kind of the, the poles that come in our city streets down here where we have the electrical, so it's, or your old-fashioned utility lights, where we have access. We don't have access, we don't have the right to go and put decorations on the maritime electric poles throughout the city. Saying that, we had a, started to have a discussion in our Public Works Committee, because Counsel Twill is passionate about fairness and equity amongst the city, and we will have this on a future agenda meeting to look at. I know that there is some talk already about how we can make some improvements, and they're trying to brainstorm that, but for this tender that we're looking at this evening, it is specifically for the old-fashioned lantern lights and our light poles within our city. But Counsel Duran, further discussion to come.
Don't forget the Santas.
Sorry, Pam.
Okay, question? All those in favor?
There's another question.
Oh. No, you, no, 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 thank you, thank you, Counsel McCabe. Thank you very much for that. Question was called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Okay, 10-0. Okay. Next one.
Public Works Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor MacLeir. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of public tender for 2023 wheel loader, complete with versatile front plow, bucket, and standard duty brush grappler, the submission of Tour Mont Cat in the amount of $368,500. grappler, the submission of Tormont Cat in the amount of $368,500 plus applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question?
Yeah, thank you for that. I was just looking through these tenders and I see where, and again, just help me understand this, but there's a $45,000 difference between the one that we're promoting here is $45,000 more than another competitive bid. And I guess I'm just asking the question, is it, is it worth $45,000 in a difference? I know we went the other way where we've, a little bit later in a tender where we kind of did not apply the same sort of strategy. But I'm just wondering, is there a, is there a value added? I'm all for spending good money if it's warranted. I just, I thought that was quite a significant difference of $45,000. Maybe Counsel McCabe or Scott, could you answer that question for me? I know it said that they, they finished, they scored higher overall, but I was just looking at that dollar value of difference.
And we did also have discussion at our committee level on this. Scott, you're probably gonna have to explain it a little bit more in detail. They talked about, you know, different parts and, and different components of this one truck that can come and go in the service and, and the quality of what it was. And they were able to justify on their scoring. But maybe the specifics, Scott, you could get into a little bit more.
Certainly. Your Worship, through to Counselor Beck. Yes, so this is a scored tender document. So it's a 70-30 split. So 70 based on specifications, which includes warranty, service that they can provide. And then the 30% is based on the price. And based on this, yes, they're the second lowest price, I believe. But they scored overall the highest in the specification. And where they really stand out is, is they're one of the only ones that actually has a local dealership. So, and, so they get higher marks for that because we, if they're, this, this piece of machinery goes down in the middle of a snowstorm, we need to have service vehicles, parts readily available. So they get a higher score for some of those things. And that's just, that's one of the main key reasons they come out on top.
That's good for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender, skid steer loader with tracks, the low submission of Atlantic coastal equipment in the amount of $127,900 or $792 plus applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, 10-0. Yes, go ahead.
Public Works Committee Resolution Number Four, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for four-by-two utility vehicle, the low submission of Vessi's equipment in the amount of $19,925 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, 10-0.
Next one.
Yes, please.
Public Works Committee Resolution Number Five, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of public tender for two 72 commercial-grade front mount mower, the low submission of Green Diamond in the amount of $68,681.60 plus applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Yes, please.
Public Works Committee Resolution Number Six, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender awarded on January 30th by council for a 5500 series crew cab and chassis, chassis, the low submission of Summerside Chrysler Dodge in the amount of $79,860 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question? Question? Okay, all those in favor. Thank you, 10-0.
Public Works Committee Resolution Number Seven, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per municipal property naming policy, council approves the application for commemorative dedication of the section of Fitzroy Street between Prince Street and Great George Street as Kerry Wynn Way.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. 10-0. Thank you.
Public Works Committee Resolution Number Eight, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that council adopt the amended Public Works Department policy procedure for installation of speed humps, P-PW-7, as attached.
Okay, Counsel Bernard is on the list. Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I have to say, I was a little surprised when I see, when I, when I read through the reasons that we're, want to make this change. So from what I understand right now, when people apply for a speed bump or, or a neighborhood street wants a speed bump, they apply to the city. They have a number of signatures from people on the city that wanted. Our staff goes out and does inspection, makes a recommendation where the speed hump will go and install it, if our staff recommendation is to do that. So that's why I'm kind of wondering why we're looking to change here as far as, we're not changing that, but now we're saying no more speed humps. 75 is the max. Now, I noticed Counselor McLeer asked about buying more. But 75 is all we have today. So what, what I get from this here, from what I'm reading is, first of all, the speed humps do work. We know they work. That's why people are asking for them. They slow traffic down their residential streets, keep the kids safe. So we're not purchasing any more. The program is working. And, and we know how the subdivisions are growing. You have Montgomery Heights out your way. We got Hidden Valley. Just to give a few examples, I have Parkman. Those subdivisions don't have sidewalks. They're, they're high density. There's going to be requests. So I'd like to know what councils are gonna be saying. Sorry, no more speed humps, no more money. So then it's gonna be first come, first served is what I hear when you apply. Now, as of next year, anything that was installed from '21 and earlier, we're taking them up. You gotta reapply. So if you're in a new area and you want a speed hump for safety for your, for the kids, you have to take one from an area that's already been approved, that we're saying has expired. And last month when this came up, I talked about the two years, which I think is ridiculous. We talked about how busy staff is. And now we're gonna do review every two years. We've got 75 speed humps out there. It makes completely no sense to me. I can understand where, where, you know, where the staff is looking for calming measures and their calming measures. Great. I don't know what they are. But I think if they want to look at, see if they can implement new calming measures, then, then bring it to council. We'll have a look at it. And if they work, we'll pull up speed humps and put the calming measures in. I know we tried to do calming measures, you probably know, in Hawthorne Avenue last year, I think it was, last year, two years ago. No, that was a stop sign there requesting. We went on with calming measures. It didn't, didn't work out. A lot of money was spent. So I'm just concerned that we're gonna start pitting neighborhood against neighborhood and resident members against resident members for those that want a speed bump. And we're not purchasing anymore. So they're all being used now. So any new streets or any new requests, we're just gonna tell them, sorry, no left. And I just don't think that's, that's appropriate. So I, I definitely will be voting against, against this change to the policy.
Counsel McCabe.
And that's what it comes to council for. Because at the end of the day, there's 10 people in here that can decide whether or not the policy will change according to. There was lots of discussion at committee level around, you know, the rule right now is if it's been there, it goes back automatically every year, right? So I think what the thing is, is with the changing dynamics in our communities and our neighborhoods, the staff wanted to be able to evaluate to see if that was still the best means for traffic calming. As you indicated, there's lots of talk about changing street design and structure to different options for calming, calming street measures. Scott, I'm gonna let you explain a little bit more in your own words why it came forward. But I don't think, because it was that way a long time ago, it needs to stay that way. I, I also had concern with the two-year time limit. I asked the question specifically in committee, how would our staff be able to handle that? They feel that they can. With any policy, if it doesn't work, we can always look to change it back. But this kind of was a recommendation coming from staff around what they'd like to see happen. And at the committee level, it was decided to push to council because they were in agreement of that.
Yeah. And I, I'm gonna use a couple of examples. Because I think most people know Brow's Lane or French Lane. They're, they're cut-through streets and they're on a hill and cars tend to pick up speed. To think that, that, you know, we're just gonna pull them up and not put them down and, and people gotta apply. Then, and you know what? There's other people applying. They get ahead of them. There are none left. And it's, it's going to happen. And I, I've always looked at it as a safety issue, safety concern, fairly inexpensive way to solve it. It has worked. And I, I suspect that what, what management is saying is that they're too busy. They don't have enough time to be putting speed humps down. I know there's only one crew that does it. There's only been one crew doing it. So if, if, if that's an issue, I think you might want to look at, at having a second crew, if that's, if that's what, what the issue is. Because other than that, I think you have something that works. And you hate to try and change it too awful, too awful much. But if you do change it and it does work it out better, then let's bring that in before we start coming up with these here, you know, as, as January 2024, all speed humps that were approved in 2021 are expired. They're all done. And I, I think that's so wrong.
Counsel McCabe and then Counsel Beck.
Yeah. And if you look at 5.3, the manager of Public Works reserves the right to instill a speed hump on any residential street in the city as necessary without receiving an application too. So that gives a little bit of a loophole when engineers know that there's problematic areas on our street. And, you know, for example, Francis Lane or somewhere that's more of a through-way street, and they feel that that would be the best means with what they have at the time to put something in place. You know, so that is in our policy there as long, as well as the criteria and what meets criteria for, for the speed hump. So there is some opportunity for, I hate to say common sense approach, but kind of common sense approach based on what they deem as appropriate, according to what I read.
But I think, I think you'll find that any speed bump that's been.
Counsel Bernard.
That, that, the people feel that that's, that's their safety mechanism.
Counsel Bernard.
So I know they have a right for one or two. But if they've all been approved, then how do you say no?
Yeah. Okay. Counsel Beck.
Yeah. I, I don't have a problem with the policy in general. I, I think the one thing I do have a bit of pause for concern is the first come, first served part of it. I, I do concur with part of what Counselor Bernard's saying about some areas are worse than others and are going to remain worse than others. Just because of the nature, we're not gonna, the way the streets have been constructed. And, and those are good examples that Counselor Bernard did give. I, I can speak for my particular ward where I think I'm a bit of an anomaly in the sense that they're asking them to get removed. It's more removed is installed. So I don't know whether the first come, first served is the right approach. I, I, I kind of like the, how we do street repair first, worst to first. Is that what we call it? Worst to first? So, you know, if, as part of this is we're going through, I understand the limitations around, we only have so much human resource. They do take time to install. I get all that part. And that's why we're looking at the 75 limit. I understand is, is the rationale for that, Scott. So I don't have a problem with that. But I, I guess I'd, I'd rather like us to see adopting a where do we need it most? Not necessarily everyone gets the same, because I don't necessarily agree with that. But I think if we can identify where are the real hotspots that really need it to satisfy that safety concern, and maybe not just an isolated incident where we're looking for some sort of support in a particular neighborhood for a particular period of time. I, I actually, I, I like the time-bound idea of it because I don't, I don't think they always apply for, for an eternity either. So I'd like to see that kind of approach taken where we identify them more on a, on a real need, identifiable need as opposed to first come, first served.
Thank you, Your Worship, to the chair. I think that, you know, I'm looking at it as well. In my ward, for, for instance, I think there's a real need for them. As a matter of fact, I could probably put five or six more in there and, and clearly having to go through that process. You know, and I, I think there's an opportunity to, to kind of have best of both worlds here. Some of the old and some of the new changes that are coming in and some evaluations as to, to looking at them as a whole. So if we have 75 now and 60 of them are working perfectly, then that assessment would continue and they would stay in year after year. And then others would be assessed based on, and I don't know what the feedback, I don't know who determines that they're not working or they're working. Is it the residents that are saying, yeah, they, they're slowing down a lot of traffic? I'm sure the Public Works Department's not sitting around monitoring streets to determine whether or not they're, they've, they've been effective and they no longer need to be there. So I think that, you know, I, taking them away, and one, I worry about communication. How's that, like, I'm gonna get the phone calls soon as the ones got off Brow's Lane. And then I'm gonna have to say, well, you're gonna have to go back and get 10 more signatures and do this process. And I can't guarantee you that it's gonna be there. There's gonna be there. Second to that, like, we talked about all this, like, 75 speed. Why don't we have 150 speed bumps? What, what is, like, how, are these things really expensive? And why don't we have a surplus of them that they can be used? We are growing. The city's growing. There's gonna be more areas that are gonna require them. So I'm, why are we stuck on 75 speed bumps? So those are some, some of my comments that I would like to raise here. I, I think that we're, it's a slippery slope. We get into changing this and started removing speed bumps that have been established in areas for long periods of time that are very effective. Now, unless someone can prove to me that they're not, they're no longer effective in that area or the city, then I'm open to that. But I don't know who's determining that. Who's determining they're not effective? I'm trying to get more put in. And I, I feel like that's a, that's an uphill battle. So that's my comments on this topic.
Counsel Ramsey.
Did you want to answer, Counsel McCabe, first or?
I didn't have a question.
Oh, she never, you never had a question?
Go ahead.
And I agree with them both. I have, like, for example, Skyview, Westview, Seaview, they're coming up Atlantic and they're thinking they're getting on north of a road that much more quicker. They're speeding down those streets. And I have residents, especially Skyview, that phone me every May, panicking whether their speed bump is gonna come back in. And if all of a sudden I'm gonna tell her, no, you gotta wait for an extra two years or, or you're off the list or something like that, like, we're gonna pay for it. So I, and as I said, did we not order extra speed bumps a few years ago?
We did.
I, I thought we ordered an extra 25. I think Public Works, we're looking for 15. And we said, no, go ahead and get 25 or 50 at that time. Because they weren't, they're not really that expensive at that time, anyway. But everything else has gone up, as you know, Scott. But I'm just saying, like, I'm in favor of keeping them there. And I always thought the rule was, once they're there, they're put back to there on the same streets every year, and then they can add on to other streets? No. This is what you're trying to change? I don't know.
Counsel McCabe.
I'm not, I'm looking at my phone because, I mean, maybe, Scott, we could send out the criteria that was established, that we approved to all of, all of council again too, just to make sure that they meet. I'm indifferent. I, I, I mean, every street in Charlottetown could use a speed bump because there's a speeding issue throughout our whole city. I guess what we have to realize is that at some point, there has to be a limit to how many speed bumps before they lose effectiveness anyway. But, or we start building our streets with bumps all through them as, as we develop new streets because people are not abiding by the rules that are in our city anyway. But I think this is probably something that instead of voting on it tonight, we maybe take it back to our committee and, and look at what the feedback, maybe we could get some feedback, send me some emails with your thoughts or your concerns. And we can bring that back to committee before. I mean, there's no more speed bumps probably going in this year. They're getting ready to be taken up. So we might as well do this a little bit better from the feedback we're hearing today and, and move ahead. I think, are you comfortable with that, Scott, as the manager?
Okay. So you're moving for defer. Who's second is?
I'm all second.
Okay, second. So the deferral's on the table, on the floor. Now, just one second. Counsel McKinnon?
No, it's gonna be deferred.
But send me some feedback.
Yeah. Okay. Counsel Bernard, do you want to speak to the deferral?
Wanted to make it clear that the policy that we passed in 2019 was to what Counselor Beck had said. That's what, you have staff out there inspecting the streets. We have criteria that we follow now. And so that's why I'm a little concerned about saying, okay, when I read through this, actually, if you want to read between the lines, what I have to get is, we're tired of doing speed bumps. We don't want style anymore. The amount we have, we're not buying. anymore. And I, so, so that's, to me, reading between the lines. And so I, you know, to me, if you wanna take this back and, and relook at it again, I do think that part of our job, we do, we, we are the, the eyes and ears to the communities that we represent. I know when, when, when the speed bump needs to come up, you know, the, the, but I also know when you have a neighborhood where a lot of new kids have moved in, especially a lot of the new neighborhoods that are coming up now, the request is there for, for safety reasons, and it's an inexpensive safety, uh, uh, tool that works for us. So I, I, I don't like that change that they're asking for now, so if you think there's a reason to take it back, to look at something else, then that's fine, I'm okay with that, I don't know what that would be, but as long as, as long as what we have out now, there's a better mechanism than just saying, sorry, we're, we're, we're taking them up.
Counsel McLeer.
No, I, I, I would just like to share as, as a member sitting on, uh, you know, Public Works, um, and with the discussion we've had here this evening, I, I think it does make sense, I'll be supporting the deferral, and, um, I think Counsel Rebecca raises a good point in terms of, uh, personally, I think I'd be in the favor of a reset of, you know, the whole thing, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, timeframe, that, um, and if the criteria has changed, then I think, um, it does make sense for these things to be allocated on a, on a, on a, some kind of a need, uh, worst to first kinda basis. Thank you.
Counsel McKinnon, go ahead.
I also support the, the deferral, but I'm wondering if Public Works would also look at for the future, buying a few more every year, put it in the budget for next year, maybe get another 25. 75 speed bumps for the city of Charlottetown is not enough, that's seven per ward, that doesn't go very far, so that's, um, and a complete reset, as you said, Counsel McLeer, that's probably not a bad idea, maybe some are not needed, start over, but I'm not in favor of the two-year, uh, reset. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we, what, Chief Engineer, what, 258 kilometers of roads and streets to the city? It's up there.
North 260.
Yeah, north of 260. Thank you kindly, Counsel McCabe. Next is economic, economic tourism and cultural development, Mr. Wayne Long's here, representing the department. Do you have a question, uh, deputy? Not yet, go ahead, whoever.
Thank you, Your Worship. Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee did not meet since our last monthly council meeting, however, the Arts Advisory Board met on July 13th, and their minutes are in your package. We don't have any resolutions for your consideration, however, I will, uh, offer a few departmental highlights at this time. Mayor Brown and the Acting Department Manager will be meeting next week with Invest in Canada as part of their cross-country check-in with partners in investment attraction. Canada is one of the world's top destinations for foreign direct investment, and Invest in Canada works directly with global businesses to help them expand to Canada. The PEI Pride Festival was a resounding success, the city was proud to support the celebrations through a grant, installation of pride sidewalks, billboards, and street banners, participation in the pride parade, as well as a significant in-kind contribution toward the safe and successful execution of the parade itself. Middle Day weekend celebrations were well-attended by residents, special thank you to the Public Works, Parks and Rec, and City Hall staff for their going above and beyond to ensure the delivery of all the activities, as well as all the elected officials who participated in the events over the weekend. The island's largest event, Old Home Week, is currently underway, and the much anticipated Gold Cup Parade will take place on Friday. A friendly reminder that the parade route will be slightly different this year, and don't forget the prestigious Gold Cup and Sasha Race next Saturday night. Staff recently overhauled the city's self-guided art walk tour, including a public artworks that have been installed since the last edition of the pamphlet. A copy of the renewed pamphlet has been left in the councilor's mailboxes. The city has begun the process of renewing its cultural policy and wants to hear from residents about how the municipality can support cultural development and help the arts community achieve its collective goals. I encourage all residents to complete the survey online at charlottownhall.ca/culturalpolicy, which is open until the end of day, August 23rd. And finally, I wanna give a huge shout-out again to all city departments and staff who are ensuring the successful delivery of the many festivals and events that are happening throughout the city during the summer months. The above-mentioned celebrations are only a glimpse of what happens, uh, taking place in Charlottetown this summer. Thank you.
Okay, questions, Counsel, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, and then Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Counsel McKinnon, for your report. Um, just hearing a lot of, um, rumblings around the event grounds, and I'm just wondering if that could be something that could be, um, brought up at the next committee meeting and maybe a report brought up back to council on what's happening, um, yeah, or unless there is something that you already know now. Thanks.
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you, Deputy, for your question. Nothing new has come to light to me on the event grounds, I have heard rumblings as well, unless, um, Manager Wayne Long, he has heard anything, but we'll definitely put it on the agenda for our next meeting and, uh, we'll bring it back to council. Mr. Long, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Long.
Your Worship, uh, through the Chair, um, there's lots of discussion these days on the, um, the event grounds. Currently, um, our Public Works Department is working with other partners, um, the Charlottetown Area Development Corporation, as well as the provincial government, with respect to creating a new roadway that would go through there as a part of the, um, the Eastern Gateway Plan. This will allow work to happen, uh, in the intersection at Hillsborough Bridge just east of the Wendy's and Tim Hortons, uh, uh, area there, so Mr. Adams and his team have been working diligently with other partners with respect to that. I believe the RFPs, uh, are going out, um, this summer at some point, I know a lot of work has been done onto it, uh, up until this point in time. And then CADC, uh, is the organization who owns the event grounds, uh, and East Link Center who operates the event grounds have been working with other partners with respect to what the event grounds looks like for future years and what that may offer in terms of an operation. Um, at this point in time, there's been a number of partner meetings and, uh, information's being collected, I think there's some research to be done, and CADC has determined the next steps, uh, with respect to what the event grounds might look like after this new street has been constructed, and how to best, um, utilize that space at its utmost capacity. So that's all I could lend, uh, for this evening, but there'll be further, um, dialogue and discussions over the weeks ahead.
Okay, Counsel Duran.
Thank you, thank you for your report, Counsel McKinnon. Again, I'm just asking the same type of question about the events ground or, or any concerts that are on the horizon. I know, uh, a large majority of, of people from Charlottetown went to Summerside to watch Jerry Seinfeld, uh, Saturday night, and, and, you know, I, I always get the question, well, what, what are you guys doing, you know, can you get somebody here? So I said, look, I'll, I'll ask it at the, at the next meeting. Again, you know, can we get anything for the events ground, can we get anything for anywhere? So I'm just wondering if anything is on the agenda, thank you.
Once again, I thank you, Counsel Duran, for your question. Yes, I recall you had brought up that question last time, and at that time, I don't think there was any plans, but Mr. Long mentioned the, between the Cary or the East Link Center and the event grounds, but if you wanna elaborate.
Your Worship, uh, through the Chair, um, there's always ongoing efforts with respect to attraction, um, I can say the East Link Center has, um, a number of holds with respect to entertainment, uh, can't speak with those publicly at this point in time because there's ongoing discussions with respect to contracts and/or otherwise, uh, so efforts remain ongoing. Um, with respect to the event grounds itself, um, there's obviously a number of things that need to be worked out with respect to, uh, what type of entertainment can be held there in future years. Uh, recently, as everyone, um, is aware, the Cavernous Beach Music Fest happened, as well as this new Somo Festival, uh, the Charlottetown Special Events Reserve Fund was a partner, uh, in both of those events, given the significant impact those events have on the city, filling hotels, uh, putting bums in seats at restaurants, um, et cetera. So, uh, there's other things to consider with respect to jurisdictions and assets, and again, one of the challenges for the East Link Center is, although they're working very hard and there's been infrastructure enhancements, there's limited capacities at time with respect to riders and requirements with larger acts, um, within the province. So in short, efforts are ongoing, there are some holds at East Link Center as we speak, uh, and efforts will continue.
Okay, Counsel Twill.
Regarding the, uh, the event grounds, I have brought up a number of occasions in the last two or three months, uh, about that facility being underutilized, and that'd be a great opportunity for artists and entertainers to have a, have a venue they truly call, truly call their own, so they could get down and, and, and have the opportunity to play in a venue that could be, uh, very rewarding from, uh, perspective where residents would be able to get down and listen, um, and, and have some consistency so that they could play six, seven days a week. Uh, it could open up many opportunities for entertainers and artists, uh, here in the city of Charlottetown, to give them the venue, uh, facility where they can perform their crafts, and, and currently, that's not happening. I, I have brought it up here, here a number of occasions, I have discussed it with you, Wayne, I have discussed it with, uh, with, uh, CADC, uh, I know that, uh, management of CADC are very, very interested in pursuing this opportunity. Uh, I think we as a city need to send that signal to CADC that we are, uh, interested and that we're willing to form a partnership, uh, with CADC to, um, construct a venue that truly has the amenities that make it, uh, make it, uh, effective and, and enticing for not only, not only musicians, but for people to wanna get down and, uh, hear the type of entertainment that they're, uh, you know, that they would like to listen to. Uh, that, that space has been sitting there for well over 14 years, not being utilized. I think it's a real shame. A lot of money went into that facility, and I can tell you that in my discussions with a representative from CADC, that all the utilities are there, it's just a matter of setting it up and, and, you know, there's still time to set up, uh, a concert for local, local musicians for this year, and at least do a trial run. I, I, I think we should pursue that, and, and I'd certainly be willing to help out. Uh, we got a, we got a venue down at Victoria Park, that's, you know, a lot of money was spent in that facility, it's not being, really being utilized either. So somewhere along the line, we've gotta, we've gotta, you know, work both into the same, same, uh, same opportunity down at the event grounds, and I don't know why we haven't pursued it, I don't know what the hesitation is, but it's, I think it's a real shame, because as, as Bobby pointed out, um, you know, residents are going to Summerside, they're going to Tyne Valley, they're going to Off Island, and yet here we are, the capital city, and we don't have a facility or venue for our local musicians and, and artisans, there's, there's a lot of talented people in this city, in this province, that would welcome that opportunity, and why there's hesitation is beyond me.
Yeah, that was Counsel Bob Duran you referred to, okay. So, anything else? Is that it? Okay, so no resolutions, so environment sustainability, Counsel Terry Bernard.
Fifteen minutes left, we'll try and go as quick as we can.
Oh, no, getting overtime.
Yeah, um, environment, the Environment Sustainability Committee, Your Worship, met on July 20, July 31st, meeting minutes are in your package, we do have, Your Worship, two resolutions tonight's consideration. Just a couple of, of good news items, Your Worship, uh, the $2 billion tree fund, uh, staff applied to the $2 billion tree fund, and we, or the $2 billion tree fund, sorry, $2 billion tree fund, I said dollar. The $2 billion tree fund, and we have been successful in receiving, uh, $50,000 to put towards further large caliber tree planting that is anticipated to be planted this fall, Your Worship. So kudos to the staff for that. And our partnership with Tree Canada, you recall, uh, Your Worship, in the spring, we had 90 large caliber trees that were for private property, um, residents could apply, our staff would go out and assess the property, uh, they were responsible to dig the hole, there'd be a $20 fee, and this was helped to replace a lot of the dams from Fiona. So those 90 trees have been gone, dispersed and planted, now, uh, we've got word that we have another 75 that we're gonna be doing in the fall, that's gonna be available for private property, on a first-come basis, this fall, the same, same criteria. So, Your Worship, um, any questions, I'll do my best, I will talk on the two resolutions when they come up.
Okay, Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, thank you, Counsel Bernard, for your report. I'm back to the monthly old, uh, question about stumps. Lady in Ash Drive called me, uh, she, she, um, wanted to say thank you for, uh, coming and helping her with, with her tree, um, but she's faced with financial hardship on, on the stump issue. And I said, we're, we're waiting, I think we had a deadline to the end of the month, we were looking, uh, to see if the, uh, province would partner with us on a stump program, I'm just wondering, I said I'd ask, uh, the Chair to see if there's any update from the province, any indication that they would join our, our stump removal program, or is there anything you can give me for information regarding that? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Duran. Um, you know what, to be honest with you, I was hoping to have that resolution here tonight, uh, I think we just missed it, but we'll have it at the next, we're gonna be meeting again, I think the 24?
28, it is the 28.
We'll, we'll have the resolution there.
That's good.
Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
That's, uh, that's good news. Now, for people that went ahead and, and removed the stump themselves, are they gonna be able to invoice, uh, the city of Charlottetown, uh, to, to offset that cost, so it's cost neutral to the taxpayer?
Counsel Bernard.
Just waiting for the red light. Thank you, Your Worship.
He's red.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Um, I guess as part of the criteria, there's a certain size that stump has to be, um, so unless we have some pictures and receipts and stuff of that, uh, I can't give an answer for that tonight, um, but that's something that our committee can discuss, 'cause I, we'd have to have a way of, of, of being able to show where the stump was, the size of the stump, and the cost. And another criteria, I think it was 38, 38, uh, at least, what was, what was the criteria for the size? Pardon me? 30 centimeters?
Can, can you just give them?
I thought it was a little bigger than that, but anyway, um, so it has to be a certain size. The whole idea of this program was to help people with move, uh, the bigger stumps that are very costly.
That's right.
I mean, you're hearing prices anywhere of $1,000 to $4,000 to remove some stumps, it was just a little bit, little ways that, that help. So as far as the stump being removed, we'll have to get back to you on that, okay?
Anyway, it's good news that you're looking at it. Okay, you wanna go to the, oh, Counsel Rebecca, I didn't see you there, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for your report, Counsel Bernard. I, I do have a question about the bike rack program. Um, I'm really interested in seeing our active transportation, and I'm glad to see we have the, uh, the, the AT, uh, multi-jurisdictional committee being formed and being looked at because I think we have real opportunities to do something here on the act, active transportation front. I guess what I, what my, part of my, I guess question might be, is the, i- i- are we a little bit, are we a little bit curped before the horse with some of this stuff? The, the bottom line is, right now, is, is people in Charlottetown do not want to bike effectively around the city, so we're looking at installing bike racks in businesses and we're putting in, in various spots, but people aren't biking to them because they don't like to, they generally don't like to bike around town. Um, and I'm just wondering whether the timing is right, I'm not against the idea at all, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a terrific idea, I just wonder whether we are a little bit ahead of ourselves in terms of that, or whether that has been thought about, or whether it might be a consideration before we get too far down that road, because the work on the active transportation system may, uh, yield different results, I guess is kinda what I'm wondering. And so I, I asked this question knowing
And so, I asked this question knowing that I'm fully supportive of active transportation. I'd love to see it happen sooner rather than later. I just want to make sure that we're doing it in the proper steps and that we're following that what may, what information may come out from that committee, maybe counterproductive or whatever to what we're trying to do here with the bike racks. So, just maybe, that was something that kind of jumped out at me and maybe if you could comment on that.
I do agree with installing it down by the community fridge.
Yeah, so the bike rack program has been, has been in place for a few years now. It has been popular. This is in here because we covered 100% of the cost. Usually, the businesses will cover 50% of the cost and I would think that it would probably get more popular now that you're starting to see a lot of e-bikes out there also. So, and this is driven by the businesses contacting us and requesting it. So, okay?
Yeah. Good point, good point there, Counsel Bernard. Good, go again, sir.
Thanks for that. I didn't have that historical piece, so that's good to know. I didn't, I didn't know where, how that came about or where it's good, so it makes sense. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Couple of resolutions. You ready there, Counsel McCabe?
All right.
Okay.
Environment and Sustainability Committee, resolution number one, moved by Counselor Bernard, seconded by Counselor McKinnon. Be it resolved that the city of Charlottetown accept the highest scoring proposal from Left Turn, Right Turn at a cost of $73,000 plus tax to lead the Public Transit Strategic Plan update for the capital region and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. The reason you're seeing this is in 2011, there was a public transit strategic plan was created for our capital region. An update to this plan is required to provide future direction to the Capital Area Transit Coordinating Committee. The face of public transit, as we know, has changed greatly since the last plan was created with large increases in ridership, new available technologies, requests for new services routes and plans for electrification in the new transit depot. So, this is just to give us a new plan moving into the future. Okay?
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, 10-0.
Yes, CAO.
Environment and Sustainability Committee, resolution number two, moved by Counselor Bernard, seconded by Counselor McKinnon. Be it resolved that the city, that city council approved becoming an ICL Canada member and purchasing a membership to the Building Adaptive and Resilient Communities Program at a cost of $36,666.34 plus tax, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. Just to give some good background on this, to build a climate action plan, staff will take two-streamed approach with climate change mitigation planning and climate change adaptation taking place separately, informing each other where necessary. The majority of the work towards mitigation planning, including an updated community greenhouse gas inventory and an update on the goals of the existing community energy plan, CEP, will be done in-house by environment sustainability staff. The Phase One final report recommended following a reputable framework to conduct climate adaptation planning and to seek external expertise to complete more technical data analysis and risk assessment. With this, the Building Adaptive and Resilient Communities, BRC, program was identified as a possibility. Building Adaptive and Resilient Communities is a membership-based program that involves partnering with the city on a robust approach to adaptation planning, including an assessment of community-related risk across Charlottetown. This customized program will involve the dedicated ICLEI liaison for technical, strategic and methodological support. So, that's the, that's the, oh, what's that called? Local Government for Sustainability is the ICLEI.
Mm-hmm. Just getting it now.
Yeah. So, research assistant, planning and facilitation of meetings, planning guidance, setting vision statements, identifying goals and objectives, identifying targets and baseline information, implementation assistance. This is what comes with this contract is what I'm reading off. These guys not interested or what?
Guys, he just presented his report. Yeah.
Monitoring and evaluation, considerations of what to track, progress on, progress reports and regular check-ins and full and unlimited access to the BRC tool. So, city staff will be heavily involved in the project, your worship, dedicating 25% FTC commitment to completing the task, checking in with ICLEI staff and participating in workshops and meeting. Timeline of this work is expected to take 12 months from commencement and the work is targeted to begin this month.
Yes.
That's why the resolution is there, your worship.
Good. And ICLEI is International Council for Local Environment Initiatives.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's Local Government for Sustainability.
Yep. Okay. Questions called. All those in favor? Thank you. 10-0. Okay. Just one second.
That's it, your worship.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you kindly. Next report is Strategic Priorities, Communication and Intergovernmental Cooperation. Counselor Norman Beck, Ward Three.
All right. Thank you, your worship. So, the Strategic Priorities, Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met on Thursday, July 27th and the package is in your, the minutes are in your package, sir. And there is one item that is proposed for consideration in the closed session. I do want to highlight just a couple of things from, one that is in the, actually, neither one of them are in this report, but they're from previous reports. And one is the paperless idea. We are seeing an increase in our tablets being used at the meetings here and it's great, which is nice to see. And we understand that there's a transition process with all this and it's great to see, but I would hope that 100, that we could get to 100% at some point in time.
Yeah.
And I do know that Tara Bender and Rory in our tech departments have been very good in showing me, who's not really technically adept, but I'm learning. And I know Counselor McCabe is coming along here as well, too. But I think it's something that I, I'd love to see if we can get to 100%, but it's great to see that we're making the inroads we are having, but there are supports around here on staff and really, it's something that I think we can hopefully get to at some point in time. The other thing I do want to talk about, too, is the, an issue that has been in the press a little bit with regards to our poor cellular service that is around the capital city area. I've had a lot of residents who've reached out to me expressing frustrations with the cellular service. I know people who've called me at home. I've, they've had frustrations trying to continue the conversations because my phone gets booted out. So, it's particularly noticeable in my ward and I don't know what the extent is right across the city, but I do understand that it is a bit of a more widespread problem that any of us would really care to live with. I have done some, this is not really, this is a private industry issue. It's a question of Bell with their services, with their tower. The tower that we are using is just situated down the street here in Fitzroy Street and basically, there's an acknowledgement that the, there's not enough capacity and infrastructure in the area. So, there is an acknowledgement on that. I am happy to say that Minister Lance has done a lot of work, has been very cooperative in terms of trying to move it along this issue with me. Robert Gibbs, former premier, has reached out as well, too, and lent his support. So, it's been good to see that there is some initiatives being made. I guess really what the, what the, the short-term answer is they're trying to make adjustments to the tower to change the angle of, I'm not sure in the technical terms, but trying to make some work with the antennas to see if they can improve cell service here in the Charlottetown area. They recognize that whatever they may be doing would only be short-term in nature. However, they are trying to look at longer-term solutions. Minister Lance has also indicated to me that they are looking to form, looking to convene a meeting to see if they can work with the provincial partners and the national level as well, too, and see if we can help getting some support or resolution to this matter. And so, it's something that we're fully cognizant of. Unfortunately, I'd love to say we had an answer right now to be able to report back, but there are some things that have been happening in the works and hopefully, we'll be able to move that along and come up with a little bit more resolution for not only residents of Ward Three, but also residents in the city who might be experiencing issues. And if there are any people that you're getting calls from who are saying, "Listen, I'm having poor receptivity," Bell would like you to let them know. You can contact 611. There's also 1-800 number that you can contact as well, too, or reach out to them on Facebook and Twitter. They will, because they want to know where the dead spots are and hopefully, we can get that improved here before long. Thank you. Any other questions? I'll answer them.
Counselor Beck, thank you very much. I know it's not just Bell, it's Talis, Shaw, so very well done and you're following up on it. And I know, speaking to you, we always lose the signal until you climb up under the roof. But anyways, I appreciate that. Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Counselor Beck, for your, for your report. I'm just wondering, is there a resolution here for the elections? Like, that's in the minutes.
It's in the minutes. Yeah, but we're...
That's enclosed?
No. No, it's not. It has, it's been deferred until we get a meeting with, with the House clerk.
Okay. So, you're going to go that way?
Yeah, it's just, it's deferred. It was brought up and will be discussed further. Counselor Duran, I just need to extend the meeting, so I need a vote. So, someone has to move.
Just to speak consent, it's two thirds.
Yeah. No, no, we have to move. We're past our time. So, I need someone to move.
I think that's where he wants to talk. We're not going to stay. Yeah, like, I guess we're... Your worship, I don't mind finishing up the public portion of the meeting, but the two agenda items for closed door, I would prefer that we put them off to our next special committee meeting and council meeting. We've been here for four hours now.
No, three hours. Eleanor, you all right with that, CAO?
Yeah.
Three hours.
We'll do it for Monday.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Counsel Duran, is that all right regarding the elections? I will get back. It's, it's an issue that is ongoing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we do have under new business a notification. Do you wish to get up?
I'll move to extend for the one extra motion.
We need a vote to extend it, so move by Counsel Gabe, second by Counsel Twill. All those in favor? Just for the motion.
Yeah.
No, she'll read the resolution, but do you want to introduce it first, please?
Thank you. Hold on. Deputy Mayor, please introduce.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship, and I've had some lengthy conversations with my fellow teammates and city councillors over the last few weeks and, you know, trying to come, come forward with a positive path to deal with the problems that our city is having. And so, first step, thought that I would, I would bring forward a notice of motion and hopefully, my fellow councillors will support this at our next special meeting of council and I believe that it is CAO Mohammed that will read the motion. So, thank you, everybody, and I look forward to us solving all of the struggles that we're having. Thank you.
And it's, and notice, it's a notification, correct?
The notice of motion.
Okay. And we're looking at coming back to it on the fourth, fourth Monday? On the 28th. Okay, there's no, can you read it out, please?
Thank you. The notice of motion is, and the motion is, that council direct police services to create and share with the public a community plan that addresses illicit drug use and related illegal behaviors to help residents feel safer in their homes and neighborhoods.
Thank you for that. CAO Eleanor, do we need a motion to defer?
It would just be a change to your agenda item. So, just make a motion to remove it off this agenda and we'll add it to your next agenda.
Okay. Need a motion to move that. Move by Counselor Ramsey, second by Deputy Mayor Yankoff. All those in favor? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Agreed? Agreed?
Everybody's agreed.
Huh? You agreeing to a council meeting?